Good morning, everyone. Happy Saturday. Budget Saturday, as we like to call it. All right, I'd like to call the session on meeting, Budget Workshop Meeting for Saturday, February 3rd, 2024. Let's start with the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Where's the agenda? Okay. Next item up is inviting and receiving public comment. Is there any public comment? Anyone that would like to address the Board today? All right, seeing none, we'll go into our meeting agenda. Okay. All right, so the agenda we have today is a little unorthodox. It's not necessarily what you normally see for a regular meeting. It's more bullet points and things like that. So what I've done is I'm going to make some opening remarks, and then I'm going to invite Kathy to present the Superintendent's 24-25 Budget Overview. Okay, as I said, good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to our Budget Workshop, where we will review the Superintendent's Recommended Budget for the 2024-2025 School Year. I know you all have seen the Superintendent's Cover Letter, where she identifies a budget recommendation of $80,477,167. This recommendation will result in an increase from last year's budget of 5.98%. And I would like to share with you, and in particular, our four new members, some thoughts as to how we begin to go about our work. As a preliminary point, though, I want to note that I am aware that the Town Council has set a "target" at its last meeting for the Board's recommended budget to be no greater than 3% over last year's budget. Such an increase would reflect a dollar amount increase of $2.25 million. Note that I refer to the Council's recommendation being directed to the Board. I say this because after our work is done over the next several days, the budget we are reviewing and that we will ultimately pass will become this Board's recommended budget. This target, the Council's target, is made this year, as it has been in years in the past, without any comprehension of the financial challenges facing the district. For example, it is made without the acknowledgement of the burden a new school bus contract would place on our school district. This target will result in a difference in what the Superintendent recommends of about $2.3 million. The increase, as you will see later today, or later in our process, the increase to our budget as a result of the school bus contract alone is $800,000. I might add that each of us have been told by countless friends, neighbors, and constituents that it was time for the district to look into hiring a new bus company. On this, the district has delivered. The target is made, the Council's target is also made without regard for increases required by contracts entered into in good faith with our collective bargaining agreements. And it is made in the context of last year's actual increase of 2%. That increase broke faith with our community because when the high school referendum was being considered, the Board committed to keep our requests at around 3%. By cutting the Board in the fashion that it did last year, the Town Council placed this year's Board in extremely challenging position. It is important to emphasize this because the education budget is not, nor can it ever truly be, static. That is because by law, the town is obliged to educate all school-aged children regardless of whether they live in the district at the time the budget is recommended or whether they move in after the budget is ratified at referendum. This becomes even more challenging when a student moves into the district after the budget is ratified, let alone recommended, that requires special services. Those variables can add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the ratified budget long after our recommendations are adopted or rejected by the Council. As the Board, we are charged by statute and charter to make a recommendation to the financial authority of the town, in our case, the Town Council, as to what we believe is the appropriate level of spending the town should allocate for education in the upcoming fiscal year. It is not in the interest of this Board to make a recommendation that is financially unsound or overly burdensome on taxpayers because there is clearly, there's a clear understanding that a financially irresponsible recommendation would be rightly rejected by the Council and frankly, the taxpayers of Farmington. In my 15 years, I have never seen the Superintendent put forward a financially irresponsible recommendation. So it falls upon us to review the recommendations made by professionals with years of training and experience and with knowledge of curriculum, staffing, teaching and learning, special education, and facilities to fully understand the costs associated with educating Farmington's children as we are today, one quarter of the way through the 21st century. It is their expertise we must rely on in our deliberations. And I would like at this point to do something that I've never seen done, but I think it's important. I want to thank by name the individuals that were involved to give you a sense of the amount of work, time, and effort that was placed in creating these recommendations. So again, I want to thank Kathy Greeter, our Assistant Superintendent Scott Hurwitz, Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen, Seamus Cullinan, Sam Kilpatrick, Ann J., Beth Haber, Dante Borowski, Darlene Sepulveda, Martinez, Denise Martin, Janice Stadler, Kara Bridgewater, Lori Wirebeck, Matt Ross, Melina Rodriguez, forgive me for saying this incorrectly, Politimi Nazakios, Veronica Rudzik, and then our building administrators, Katie Blor, Russ Christ, Katie Doherty, Kaitlyn Ecker, Carolyn Fink, Carrie Huber, Lisa Kupczynski, Lauren Lavecchia, Mary Lundquist, Felicia Poskus, Jessica Safran, and Nicole Vivert. And also all the school and program leaders throughout the district. While I thank these individuals, that is not to say that as members of the Board we do not have a significant role in reviewing their recommendations. Indeed, we have a critical role placed upon us by statute and charter. If a member here believes that a line item or budget object is overstated or does not accurately reflect the true cost of something, I encourage you to bring that up. It is not our job to simply rubber stamp the recommendations of the school district. But if you're going to make a suggestion, I would respectfully ask that you clearly state why you believe a certain item or object is in fact overstated or not accurately reflecting what the true costs might be. If you believe a financial, sorry, if you believe that a recommendation is fiscally irresponsible, please call it out. If you believe our professionals got something wrong, I'd be eager to hear why. We'll be going through this book this morning with an eye to completing this preliminary review before 2:00 p.m. Now, I know there's a Yukon game at 12:00. I would like to be home for the second half, but I understand that might not be possible. But that is not necessarily a hard stop. We will work until this is done, and we will review every page. The budget is broken down into sections that are tabbed for your reference. The Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent will lead us through our review. Budget lines are referred to as objects. As we go through the book, feel free to ask questions about various items and why they are recommended at whatever level is indicated. Not all questions will be answered today, and not all questions will necessarily be answered. If there appears to be a consensus that a question from an individual member need not be answered, then the Superintendent and her team will not be obliged to answer it. All questions asked to the Superintendent today are to be responded to or will be responded either later today, as you see her team is here, and they can respond to some questions in real time. Sometimes we'll have to come back and reflect on that on Monday. As we go through the book, I'll ask you for a motion to tentatively approve a recommendation set forth on each page. At the conclusion of our work, I will ask for a motion to tentatively approve the entire recommended budget. This is not, however, the final say. It is good to take the next day or so to reflect on the work that we do here today and be prepared to raise any other concerns or questions we have at our Monday night meeting. It is possible that if there are concerns that remain unaddressed on Monday night, we would return Tuesday and perhaps Wednesday. And I can tell you it's not unprecedented to come back on a Tuesday. I don't think we ever come back on Wednesday. I would add one last thing. In my 15 years of Board service, I have heard budgets for the schools as being the responsibility of the Board of Education's "side of the house." I want to be very clear. There's only one house in Farmington. The ultimate determination of how much Farmington pays for public education for the upcoming year will be solely driven by the decisions of the Town Council. The Board and the Superintendent will work within whatever confines the Council and its wisdom will impose. But be clear, whatever we spend or whatever we don't spend will be the work of the Council. Thank you, guys. With that, I'd like to invite Kathy and Scott to begin the work.
So Matt, yeah, is going to play the video that goes over all aspects of the drivers of this particular budget, which are very, very unique, as Bill said, this particular year. And it is a longer-than-normal presentation only because I tried to also break the budget down in a couple different ways to give you a sense of, you know, the kind of magnitude of those very unique drivers in this particular budget.
Good morning. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these visionary core improvement documents across all schools and classrooms. As a leading school district in Connecticut and beyond, this alignment has continued to serve the community, families, and students of Farmington well as evidenced by our innovative programming and impressive outcomes across a variety of indicators. From initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget through school and program reviews of all requests zero-based budgeting practices were utilized, I will quickly review our core improvement documents in the next few slides as they are the foundation of our budget development process. This slide shows Farmington's mission statement, which promotes personal and academic excellence for all students as well as the acquisition of all of the skills and dispositions outlined within our Vision of a Global Citizen, or VOGC, ensuring Farmington's students lead the way now and in the future. Throughout the budget review, you will see evidence of how the vision of a global citizen has been a focus of the development of the 24-25 budget. Our VOGC guides our improvement work and thus it is the foundation of our budget or financial plan for the coming school year. As highlighted on the previous slide, our vision of a global citizen is considered what the entire school district is focused upon when it comes to strategic improvement from the district level to schools to all Farmington classrooms. The framework for teaching and learning outlined on this slide is our student-centered instructional model. The FTL is considered how we ensure all students acquire each element of our VOGC through innovative delivery of our curriculum with meaningful, real-world learning opportunities in classroom environments of care, curiosity, and inclusivity, leading to deeper learning experiences for all students. Our core beliefs are highlighted on this slide and reflect why we collectively engage in strategic improvement aligned to our core documents, actions, excellence, equity, mindset, teamwork, and well-being matter in Farmington. Our equity framework and all of our core documents are integrated within our strategic improvement plans and, as I said earlier, are the foundation of our budget development process each year. This slide outlines all of our core documents, which serve as a strong foundation for strategic planning, teacher and administrator goal-setting, hiring and recruiting, professional development, as well as our budget recommendation and all elements of our work with students each day. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this budget, here are the major themes of the 24-25 budget. There are several unique themes of this budget that necessitated a higher recommended increase. The Superintendent's Recommended Budget maintains and advances academic excellence through innovative programming pre-K-12, promotes innovation in student-centered teaching and learning, supports increased student need in the areas of academic and social emotional well-being, addresses needs and continuous improvement related to transportation, safety, registration, and residency, addresses a restoration of funding due to the 23-24 budget reductions, addresses the need to move funding off of the S.R. 3 AARP grant to the operating budget as this grant funding is ending, addresses significant cost increases across supply, equipment, and many other accounts due to the economy. Factors in other grant funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in the operating budget contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions, and efficiencies to maintain and advance current programming and maintains class size level in accordance with Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the Recommended Operating Budget for the 2024-2025 School Year. The total recommended budget amount is $80,477,167 for a dollar increase of $4,539,945 or a percent increase over the 2023-2024 budget of 5.98%. Here are the major drivers by series related to the recommended 5.98% increase. It is important to note that the economy is impacting all areas of our school district budget when it comes to cost escalation for the coming school year. In the salaries series, 3.55% of the 5.98% increase reflects negotiated contractual obligations, state-mandated requirements, and movement of S.R. 3 AARP staff funding to the operating budget. In the services series, 1.67% of the 5.98% increase is due to increased transportation costs with a focus on student safety and high-quality service. Utility costs and increased contracted rates are also drivers in the services series increase. In the supply series, 0.48% of the 5.98% increase is driven by current economic conditions, the restoration of funding due to 23-24 reductions, and a need to move supply costs off of S.R. 3 AARP funding. In the equipment series, 0.03% of the 5.98% increase is driven by the restoration of funding due to 23-24 reductions for equipment related to one-to-one devices for all students. Lastly, 0.25% of the 5.98% increase reflects all other areas, including but not limited to benefits as well as dues and fees for an increase of 5.98% over the 23-24 budget. Here is a different view of the drivers or themes of the 5.98% increase across all series that reflect the unique story of the 24-25 recommended budget. Again, the economy is impacting all areas of our school district budget when it comes to cost escalation for the coming school year. Budget reductions from 23-24 impacting the 24-25 budget. 1.44% of the 5.98% increase reflects reductions across categories, including salaries, supplies, equipment, et cetera, either reduced or reduced and moved to the S.R. 3 AARP grant in 23-24, now moving off this grant to the operating budget. As a reminder, approximately $1.6 million was cut out of the 23-24 budget from original budget submissions. Transportation contract, 1.08% of the 5.98% increase is due to increased transportation costs with a focus on student safety and high-quality service. It is important to note that we would have experienced a significant increase in transportation with or without the bid process. This reflects costs as a result of going out to bid with a focus on safety and high-quality service. Staffing or FTE moving off the S.R. 3 AARP grant. 0.30% of the 5.98% increase is due to current FTEs moving off the S.R. 3 AARP grant not associated with reductions in 23-24. New FTE requested. 0.77% of the 5.98% increase reflects the total for all new FTEs based on need for 24-25, including certified and non-certified staffing. Lastly, 2.40% of the 5.98% increase reflects the total remaining increase for the recommended 5.98% increase. Farmington has a tradition of leading the way in education. Here are some favorable academic accomplishments that reflect the taxpayers' investment in our school district. Here are some additional accomplishments across academic subject areas. This slide reflects the fine work and dedication of our students, faculty, and staff as well as our focus on innovative and continuous strategic improvement efforts. Here are some additional notable accomplishments that position Farmington as a leading school district related to sports, art, and music programming and outcomes. We should be very proud of the well-rounded education provided to all students in Farmington. The last three slides exemplify our many and varied accomplishments as a school district, which are directly attributed to our community's investment in our schools through our annual budget. This slide, along with the previous three slides, show the school district's commitment to excellence and student outcomes coupled with fiscal responsibility. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with 1 spending the most and 166 spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 111 in the most up-to-date per-pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts, which is $767 less per pupil than the state per pupil average or a difference of approximately $3.1 million. Although we rank 111 in per-pupil expenditures, our schools and school district consistently rank at the top of leading schools and school districts in Connecticut and beyond across a variety of rankings. We continue to exhibit exemplary fiscal management within Connecticut and when you compare us to like-school districts across many indicators. Here are some examples of our commitment to cost containment and avoidance. I will highlight a few notable items on this slide. We applied for and were awarded a security grant for $96,000 to offset costs for safety and security upgrades at pre-K-8 schools. We applied for and were awarded a literacy grant totaling approximately $130,000 to offset operating budget costs for a new Connecticut reading mandate. We recently negotiated an electricity contract from 2024 to 2027 at a low fixed rate resulting in cost containment for the school district. Reductions to this budget of over $500,000 were applied to arrive at the Superintendent's recommended budget. The first budget driver is salaries, the 100th series, which accounts for 66% of the total recommended budget. The budget increase in the salary line is 5.38% and reflects negotiated contractual obligations. As a reminder, we have additional salary costs moving off S.R. 3 AARP funding due to both budget reductions and the 23-24 budget and/or new positions due to student need. The series reflects all of the association salary increases for the coming year which are highlighted on this slide. This slide outlines the certified teacher and faculty full-time equivalent or FTE increases within this budget that total 5.1 FTEs. The FTE increases described on this slide were reviewed in detail at our last Board meeting by Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen. This slide reflects non-certified staffing increases totaling 8.29 FTE. 2.0 FTEs include a coordinator and clerical support for security as well as residency. It is important to note that this is the second time we are making this request in an effort to address ongoing challenges we face with registration and residency in Farmington. In addition, the coordinator of residency and safety will oversee security in collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations as well as the Farmington Police Department. 3.72 FTEs highlighted on this slide were reviewed in the special services presentation at our last meeting and reflect an additional four paraprofessionals in special services due to current student need. A 1.0 FTE for a monitor at FHS due to a shift of funding for this position back onto the operating budget from the S.R. grant. A 0.57 FTE for ELL tutor hours to support the increase of identified students requiring tutoring. This was highlighted during an ELL presentation at a January Board meeting. A 1.0 FTE for end-user support technician due to support needed within the technology department, which was previously requested in last year's budget. Substitutes. This is not an FTE request but a shift of funding back into the operating budget from the S.R. grant as well as a requirement to increase pay to meet a state mandate of increased minimum wage while remaining competitive in the Farmington Valley related to attracting substitutes. The next budget driver is insurance or the 200th series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget with a 1.37% increase driven by claim trends. The 200th series includes employee health benefits providing 100% of expected paid claims with a high deductible HSA and coinsurance as well as life insurance and long-term disability costs. Services is the next budget driver, the 300th series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget. There is an increase of 11.58% in the services series driven by transportation services, a restoration of funding due to budget reductions in the 23-24 budget, moving service costs from S.R. 3 AARP to the operating budget, and increased costs across many areas of the services account due to the economy. This account also provides for special services consultation services and tuition costs for outplacements, major facility projects, for outplacements, major facility projects, K-8 summer school, and technology-based operational systems, as well as professional development. The next series is the supplies, or the 400 series, which accounts for 3% of the total recommended budget. The supplies series reflects 18.25% increase for restoration of supply funding due to budget reductions in the 2324 budget approval process, and increased cost across all areas of the supplies account due to the economy. The 500 series, or equipment series, accounts for 1% of the total recommended budget and reflects an increase of 6.38% due to the need for equipment, restoration of reductions in equipment in the 2324 budget, and increased cost due to the economy. Dues and fees, or the 600 series, accounts for less than 1% of the total recommended budget and shows a 7.03% increase. This account includes memberships and organizations that support our strategic improvement efforts. This account also includes the town of Farmington's negotiated liability, umbrella and motor vehicle insurance, or the school district. Kerma contractual obligations are the primary driver of this increase. Here is a view of the entire superintendent's recommended operating budget, all of which I reviewed within this budget presentation. In summary, the 2425 recommended budget is responsive to our students' needs and advances our visionary strategic improvement priorities. Due to the unique drivers of this budget, we are experiencing a higher percentage increase than we have experienced in the past. Again, the unique budget drivers for the 2425 budget are restoration of funding from the 2324 budget reductions to the 2425 budget. Some of these reductions were placed on the SRR3 ARP grant. The end of SRR grant funding and movement from SRR funding to the operating budget in 2425. Economy-driven costs across the entire budget. Transportation costs with a focus on student safety and high-quality service. Many Connecticut school districts are facing similar or larger budget increases in 2425, and we are no exception. In fact, last year, when we received a 2% increase that included significant budget reductions, our peer districts received significantly larger increases, some reaching 6% or more percent, and this trend continues as school districts are developing their 2425 budget. This is a unique time with a unique set of budget drivers for the coming school year's budget. The fiscal information presented today and the reported district and student achievement results represent a value-added approach to strategic planning, improvement, and budget development. At all times, our strategic improvement efforts and financial plan are centered upon our students, their needs, and their future, as self-aware individuals, empowered learners, disciplined thinkers, engaged collaborators, and civic-minded contributors. Thank you for your attention to this presentation and your thoughtful review of our recommended 2024-2025 budget.
Thank you, Kathy, for that presentation. It was very helpful, very informative, and a nice summary. And people following at home will have an opportunity to see this as well, right? Okay. Be on our webpage at some point, or?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, with that being said, we can go. You want to begin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Kathy, for that. I appreciate the opportunity to review that and as well as our stakeholders online having the chance to look at it later. Now that you've had a chance to look at the superintendent's budget presentation, we'll now walk through the budget book in greater detail, section by section. Before we get started, we'll just do an orientation to the book itself, and then we're going to dive in page by page. So as you open your budget book and you move past your agenda for the day, the opening pages include the superintendent's budget message, which serves as a summary of our strategic and collaborative approach to the budget process and aligns, as you heard in the presentation, with our priorities and goals and our budget drivers. Keep flipping. You'll see the agendas there, and then we'll follow right into the introductory pages. The first tab, titled Introduction, includes a chart of the budget summary in comparison with last year's budget. If you continue to flip to introductory page two, it has a pie chart that visually breaks down our budget by percentage in each object. And then as you continue to move forward, the introductory pages, introductory pages three through seven outline the budget philosophy guided by our core documents, as you heard in the presentation, and finally, introductory pages eight through 10 provide you our 2425 budget summary. Each budget section followed by the introduction is rolled into our larger buckets, or as you heard before, what we call objects. And then I'll provide an overview of each of the six sections, which are salaries, benefits, services, supplies, equipment, and dues and fees. The first page of each section in your budget book that are tabbed out will start with a pie chart that shows how much we're expending in relation to the rest of the overall budget. When we go through this today, we'll start with that big look, and then we'll go page by page so that you can see how each section is expended or projected to be expended. The board will have to have a motion for each of these pages, and then after that, we'll have a chance where I can discuss where we are, and then you'll have a chance we can interact with questions and dialogue around that, followed by tenet of approval of the board of each page. Behind the aforementioned six sections, you'll find additional budget documents. We won't be diving into these in the specific agenda, but certainly happy to visit those if there's any questions that relate. These documents include our capital budget, which you reviewed earlier in January, our federal and state grant, comparative data within our district and across the state, and then salary schedules for each of our bargaining units as well. I welcome any questions. I know, really appreciative. I want to thank our team. Thank you to our chair for acknowledging the hard work that happened across the district. Not everyone is here today, but certainly a large part of our team is committed to being here as well to support any questions or needs that we have, and also worked really hard for quite a long time here to prepare this budget for everyone today. So are there any questions?
Any preliminary questions before we jump in? All right. Please.
All right, great. Let's go to our first section then, which is tab salaries. I'll give everyone a chance to find that and...
Okay. All right, so then I'll... All right, so we'll start with page one in the salary tab.
And right before I get to there, as you see the pie chart, the first section, salaries, which accounts for 66%, or a large part, very, very large part of our total budget. You can see the beginning page there, as I alluded to before, shows the pie chart illustrating this object. This year, as you heard already in the superintendent's presentation, the salary line is a 5.38% overall increase and reflects obligations for contractual agreements that have already been made. So the series reflects each association's salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on the page ahead. And if there's no questions, we'll get started.
Okay. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve page one, central office salaries in the amount of $638,183?
Motion? Second.
Okay, discussion?
All right. So as you can see on this page, page one here is central office salaries, which provides the salaries for the Office of the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Finance and Operations. The 2425 request is $638,183, or a change of $21,133, resulting in a 3.42% increase.
Any questions? I'm hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Vote unanimously. Okay. Take a deep breath. Now we get going. All right, next page, page two. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve principals' salaries in the amount of $2,513,881?
Motion?
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. You got to get... No, no, you got... I'm calling for a second. All right, we'll figure it out.
So this account accounts for our educational leaders across the district. So these are administrators who manage and operate many aspects of our day-to-day operations within the schools, the development, and at the district level. This increase is a result of the recently agreed-upon FASA contract. So the 2425 contract provides for a 2.5% increase and also had a step reconfiguration, but there is no step movement in this. The 2425 request is for $2,513,881, or a dollar change of $128,076, and a 5.37% increase.
Okay, so this is consistent with the FASA contract?
This is driven completely by the FASA contract.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments, questions?
So I just had a question, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding. So it says like it's a 2.5% contract increase, but the percentage increase here is like five. Could you just explain that, how that would happen with no step increase?
Absolutely. So when the contract was agreed upon, there was a market readjustment on steps, which likely results in the change. Also, we don't currently have any changes, but administrators, you know, as this contract came in, administrators come in at varying areas, so they're spread across the board, but it was likely driven by the reconfiguration along with the increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Next up, page three is blanks. We're going to go to page four. Motion to tentatively approve page four preliminary professional staffing page for 2425. Can I get a motion?
Motion? Second.
Discussion?
This page was reviewed in detail from Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen's presentation during our January 8th board meeting. And we'll go into greater detail as we get to the pages ahead in terms of the costs related.
Right now, we're just, we're approving the page. We're not approving any line item number associated with it, just approving the page as being part of the recommended budget. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good vote. It passes unanimously.
We didn't make a motion.
We didn't make a motion? I thought we did. All right, can I get a motion? No, I did.
At the beginning.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so the motion has passed unanimously. Okay. All right. I'm now going to step down from the chair for the next item and for a couple of items as well as it relates to the teacher contract as a conflict of interest that I have. Turn it over to Andrea.
So on page five, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page five, teacher salaries in the amount of $36,252,951?
Motion? Second.
Okay. So this account is contractual obligations for our teachers. You can see there, not only teachers is a broad term, it covers school counselors, library and media specialists, specialist area teachers such as music, physical education, art, and any other educational specialists within our district. The FASA con... or, excuse me, the FEA contract for 2425, which is its second year in the new contractual agreement, has a $1,800 increase for teachers at the top step. And then this includes the 5.1 FTEs being requested within the operating budget. I do have a note, so we can get our pens ready. There was a change between the time the budget book was produced, and now there'll be a slight save... will there be a savings here, but an increase later somewhere else. But overall, a general slight savings. When we, teachers typically announce their retirement prior to or on February 1st. So we received between the time the budget book was produced and today, which is the 3rd of February, we received a retirement announcement. Therefore, when I read, you'll notice there's a slight difference between the original motion and where we are. And so the total request now is $36,234,279, or an increase of $1,502,144, resulting in a 4.32% increase overall. Any questions?
So I'll need a motion.
Right. Right, due to the additional retirement.
All right. So can I have a motion to tentatively approve page five, teacher salaries in the amount of $36,234,279?
Motion?
Second. I'm sorry, I'm just getting confused with the motions and when I can talk. So like, your motion to accept it, and then there's discussion after each motion.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Yes. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Ready?
Now's good. Okay. So I know that this is like the largest bucket, so obviously I was just trying to wrap my head around it the most because it's a big portion of the budget. And I totally understand the negotiated contractual obligations that are associated with it, so that's like out of our control. But I do think, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's like assumptions that are made on top of those contractual obligations in terms of like maternity leaves or, you know, different things in terms of like what that contractual obligation is applied to. So let me keep talking, and then maybe it'll make sense. So I looked at the financial statements for like the fiscal year ending for like last year as an example, and within salaries and benefits, which again, there's the contractual obligation, but it's applied to some assumptions that we're making. And I get we want to be conservative to make sure that we cover the most breadth of everything and anything that might come up throughout the year. But it looks like, and if I'm reading it correctly, for like the last fiscal that ended for 2223, between salaries and benefits, there was like an extra $1.2 million in that fund at the end of that year. And then if we go like a year back, those two, like salaries and benefits combined, which again, I'm assuming has part of the component of the contractual obligation, part of the component applying that to assumptions that we're making on staffing, has about $1.1 million in a balance at the end of the year. And then the year prior to that, it's about a million as well. So I'm just thinking to think creatively in terms of, you know, I want to be a partner in all of this, and I would love to vote unanimously for a budget. But I feel like obviously we want to try to be lean where we can in a year where, you know, we have all of these high numbers where we're trying to look at it comprehensively for like all of our town and how that will affect taxes. Because I know the 6% increase in the Board of Ed really translates to like an 8% increase in terms of all our residents paying for like, you know, what they're paying. So is there a way that we can look at this and be not like so lean that doesn't give us any wiggle room, but it just seems like having a leftover average of like a million dollars a year in this bucket item just seems almost like we can do a second look at that to see if there's any way that maybe our assumptions are a little bit too conservative here, especially on a year where we're trying to be conscious of everything else that we're trying to manage. That just, to me, is a big bucket item that has, you know, I'm trying to reconcile the million dollars that are sitting in the bucket at the end of the fiscal and trying to understand like how that would translate. So that's just my comment and where my focus was when I was going through this. Because this information is good, but I really would have to understand like what did we budget last year and where did that budget item come in is where like my head was at when reviewing all of these items, and that's why I just pulled this up. And if I'm reading it wrong, please correct me.
So every year, what we do is we take the staffing that we currently have, we move them to next year, which includes an increase that's contractual. So it is a moment in time where we're moving people forward, and we're correcting any turnover issues we had. So turnover is when a person resigns. We didn't know they were going to resign. The budget's already passed, and we hire someone new. And that person may have more experience than the person who left, which we did not budget for. We only budgeted for that person's salary with their budget, with their contractual increase. Other times, we hire someone with less experience, and there's a savings in the budget. The other thing that can happen, and many things happen during a school year, so we have turnover. We also have people that go out on leaves, maternity leaves, medical leaves. Some take leaves without any pay. When you see that happen, sometimes we're paying two salaries. We're paying the person that might be on a maternity leave and at the same time, their substitute. So the substitute line often goes way over. While if it's an unpaid leave, we start to have some savings in the teacher line, but in the substitute line of, you know, it could be a large increase, which we did not budget for. So you will see that in our financials every year, this back and forth. But as we budget, we bring everyone forward, which is the responsible thing to do. We don't want to underfund it, and we know what we have right now. We add in the SRR FTE that you saw coming back. We add in the new positions. We add in any other contractual increases that we have that might hit other budget lines when we deal with stipends and other things. We also apply a teacher turnover amount. So we actually underfund teachers by a teacher turnover because we anticipate that we will save some money in teacher turnover. The last thing we do is we look at our retirements, and we bring... They may be making top step. Most are at a retirement level, are at the top step. We look at each position. If it's a shortage position, we don't reduce it by much because there are so few teachers out there that typically we have to hire someone with a lot of experience that end up at the top levels of our salary scale. But if it's a position like elementary, that is not a shortage position, and we bring down that salary when we budget down to, what amount is it? 77? Is it 70? Something like that.
When it's a...
When it's just an elementary position, what do we... We're bringing a top salary down to what level?
73,966.
73,966.
73,966. So that's how we budget it. So we have already, yes?
And a shortage is 84,653.
Yes. So we're accounting for retirements. We're accounting for actually underfunding this account because we anticipate some turnover, and we know the trends of turnover. And we know the trends of turnover. And then, you know, we're just bringing everyone forward with their new increase. So we do account for all of those things, but things can happen in the school year that we could never anticipate and we would, we would never underfund this to a point where we would find ourselves having to go to town council and ask for more funding. It's a volatile, it can be very volatile. And during the school year, there, there's a lot that can happen. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything.
I think the only thing I'd add, I can't say where we'll end up this year. I, I don't think we're trending as positively as we have. There is savings, that's something we look at in our monthly financial statements, so there is currently a savings in our teacher account. It is not to the level it was the year before. You'll also notice as, I don't want to get ahead, but as we go to substitutes, you'll see a massive increase in substitutes. You know, I was reading in the paper, there are many other districts, some districts are like, we're not stumping as a major budget driver on substitute line, but there are other districts that are massively funding that because it has just been much more volatile than it has been in the past few years with the increase in, in leaves that we are seeing and the real significant challenge to find personnel to come in and fill those positions. And there's just been greater competition in the market. It is unique because teachers are driven on a contract and so, but certain shortage areas in particular have become highly competitive and highly transitional across the state where there's just been a lot of movement around based on, you know, certain high need areas and where teachers can get that. So it, those would be considerations to make, I would think, in this line.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I appreciate everything that was just explained and that makes a lot of sense. Obviously, again, I said like I would agree, we want to be conservative, like we don't want to have to come and say we need money in this bucket. And you can see everything you discussed, Kathy, like there's pluses and minuses for subs or, you know, and to me, I'm just a numbers person, so like that bucket line, line item nets out though over the last three years. So this isn't like a fluke in like one year when you see like data consistently in a certain trend to be about one-point-one million dollars in excess. And I did look at Scott, the current financial statement as of December 31st, and I thought we actually were trending pretty similarly. I think there was around six-hundred thousand in that currently as of December 31st. So that would be about on trend or a little bit less maybe, but around still a significant amount. I, I'm just posing this as a potential area to look at because I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for an overall budget knowing that we had a hun, over one million in this for the last three years without trying to look at it to try to decrease it, given everything else I just said in terms of the comprehensive budget. So that's just where my head is at when I was looking at these numbers, but I can appreciate everything that you're saying. And obviously, we don't want to be too lean on anything because you don't know what's going to be thrown at you throughout the year, but the last three years I just thought were like indicative of a, of a trend.
Yeah, and we've, we have been doing very well in self-insurance, we've been trending well. That is another volatile account, we are self-insured. So we reap the benefits of great claim trends and then we take the risk of a potential not-so-good claim trend situation, and that can be thrown off very quickly. We've been on the last few years in a very good place with our claim trends, which has created savings. And you can see we have a very small increase in self-insurance while other districts are getting ten, twelve percent increases. We have a one-point-three-seven percent increase, and that's because we've been, there's been money left in that self-insurance account. That allows us to budget less in the next year because that money is part of our reserve. We have a collaborative policy related to our, our fund reserve between the town and the board. Many years ago, during a recession, we had depleted our reserve to deal with some really significant budget challenges. After that, we met with the town, we came up with a very forward-thinking, unique policy that really articulates to us how we treat that fund. So we do use, you know, insurance kind of expectations of what that fund should look like. And we, if, if we're way over in that, we can actually under, underbudget it because we would pull from that reserve in a particular year. We have a very healthy reserve because of these trends right now, that's not always the case. And so that actually, if you see money left in employee insurance, what, that's a fund that rolls over. So it's not like, oh, it's over that year and we're able to put, apply that to our reserve. And then that really helps us in the coming year when it comes to budgeting or when it comes to claim trends that we didn't anticipate, even though we work with our consultants on claim trends over time and we budget appropriately, we end up having a nice reserve when all of a sudden we see claims, because we take on the risk. We don't have an insurance company that's going to take that risk on, except for, and I can talk about stop-loss later, but that has really helped us to, if you look at the last few years, we've had very small employee benefit increases and we have a healthy reserve. So I would look at just salaries and not salaries and benefits because they're really two different things when it comes to, you know, the budget.
Yeah, that's fair. And I think, I was just thinking of it, I know that they're both assumptions are made for both of them, so I was like applying it. But to your point, I mean, even just last year, honestly, the benefits component of that number was like very small, the, it was one-point-one million in just salaries. The year before, eight-hundred thousand in salaries, and then the year before, seven-hundred thousand in salaries. So I mean, to your point, yes, it's, it's different, but there's still a significant number, so, yeah.
And I guess the last, the last piece, you know, maybe not the last piece, but another piece to look at that I don't think is a significant driver, but worth mentioning would be the services area, which consistently runs over. When you cannot find a substitute, which is the case sometimes, you have to go to an agency, which is quite expensive. And, and we've unfortunately been having to do that in particular in shortage areas and in specialized areas. So that would be another area where you would see a savings in teachers and additional costs relating to services. So those are just other considerations. I'm, I'm not saying it's driving massive bottom-line numbers, but it is another place where you're going to see savings in one area, but increased costs somewhere else.
When, when there's a lack of substitutes and you, did you ever split classes for the teacher? I know when I was in Middletown, we used to, if there was no substitute that day or the building sub was out, and what we would do is take the class and split the class between two teachers or whatever. Is that in their contract or?
We, we often don't split classes, but we'll, you know, there's a lot of other personnel in the building that are being re-deployed for that. Or at the high school, sometimes you're, you know, you're, we're trying to avoid it all costs, but you're pulling, you're, you're closing your tutorial for the day and pulling that person into, you know, you're pulling other personnel to try to. It's, it's really a work of art that happens every day between the building administrator and whichever office clerical individual is, you know, and that's, when you start out in administration, that's one of the first things you learn and so maybe a credit to the operational skillset, but you know, something that is a real challenge, but something that happens every day in our schools.
Andrea? So basically to reflect on Angela's question and kind of where we're at here, you're saying that based on historical data, all the things that you're looking at, and then of course the current environment and trends, obviously budgeting is, you know, guessing game to some degree, but that you feel like this is where we land with this considering everything.
Yes, I mean, this would, this is a responsible way of budgeting and it's, it's accurate as far as the increase in the contract, in the contract, also taking into account retirements, taking into account underfunding the account for the anticipate, anticipation of turnover, which we're, we have each year, that's just part again of like the operational part of, of the work. So yes, this would be the accurate budget total for teachers.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm not going to vote for that, I just don't feel comfortable for it.
It's a nay for Angela?
Nay, yes.
Abstentions, Bill is obviously abstaining. All right, and then I would ask you, since Bill is out of the room at this point, to go to pages sixteen to eighteen, under the benefits section, and that refers to employee benefits, health insurance. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve pages sixteen through eighteen employee benefits health insurance in the amount of ten million, eighty thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars?
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this, this item here covers our employee health insurance. Kathy gave a brief description a moment ago. The way we arrive at, at this analysis as well as we have a, we have a self-insurance consulting consultant that we work with, the town works with the same consulting group. So we take our claims and make projections off that. This is an ongoing and iterative process. And then as we work towards setting the rates, we also work with Cigna, who provides the health insurance for our employees, they provide a number to us. And then typically, we try to reconcile between the projection of our consultants and the projection of our insurance carrier. We have, as Kathy said, been trending well. You know, as you look at page eighteen, you can see that Farmington has at least a trend of having some really, really good years. And then somewhere along the line, you, you may run into a year or two where, where there's a greater challenge. And so we are on a trend right now where we've been having some very, very good outcomes as it relates to insurance. We're optimistic, but also I would say cautiously optimistic, given that we haven't seen a real challenge year in some time, and that has been a trend. And, and you know, following health insurance and coming off the pandemic and the rise in costs, along with folks who maybe did not take good care of themselves during that time and then re-engaging in, in both preventative care and then anything that arises. So that's where we get to, the ten million, eighty, eighty thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars or one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase or a one-point-five-one percent increase. This is an area that we look at really carefully and really happy that we are where we are with this, especially in speaking to some of my colleagues in, in other areas that are also self-insured. They, for one reason or another, have not been as fortunate in this, in this particular area.
Discussion?
Can you just explain one more time when you were saying, so if there's an excess in that fund, it rolls over, you were saying, Kathy, like you use it the next year?
Right, that, it would remain in that account in the reserve. And so, you know, when, you can see the financials, some, some months we are lower than we projected, sometimes we're higher than we projected. So that's an ongoing, like you can see that each year in the, sorry, each month in the financials. And we do have a self-insurance reserve with the town. It's a collaborative reserve that we have. And we have, we fund it, I think it's thirty-five, is it thirty-five percent, something like, there's, there's a, a standard in insurance, what you should have in your reserve at least. I'm not saying we're just at that, but we have to have at least twenty-five to thirty-five, somewhere around there. And, you know, we, I would say the town also, you know, in the reserve, has a healthy reserve as well. And again, we could have a, we could have catastrophic claims, and those are claims that we're, we're talking hun, you know, hundred, two-hundred or more thousand that we did not anticipate. That's why we need that reserve to be very healthy so that we aren't in a situation where, you know, we don't have enough in our insurance account to cover these. We do have stop-loss, stop-loss insurance, so at a cer, it is capped. And then the insurance company pays beyond that because some of these claims can be significant if there was a significant medical issue within one's family that's covered or the employee. So that, you know, we have a risk up to a certain point and then stop-loss insurance takes over. So that's part of this account too, is what we pay for stop-loss insurance.
And so it's a minimum of the twenty to thirty percent, you were saying, in the reserve. We hold more than that though, so do you just make the decision then if there's excess in it, like whether to apply it to the reserve or, or not each year is basically what happens is, or do we try to stick to a certain threshold? I mean, the minimum is the twenty to thirty, but do we have a threshold that we stick to?
No, I wouldn't say not particularly. We're, we have about forty percent, maybe a little bit more than that right now. So we're, like I said, that's a, that's a comfortable place to be, especially given that we haven't had a bad year in, in a while. In the event that we do, we're positioned well to not have to ask for money elsewhere. So, so we're above that, that line right now. You know, we, we monitor at a minimum quarterly as well in terms of our, what we call like catastrophic claimants. So those would be, you know, those would be folks who are, you know, who have high claims. We do that review every two months just to, to check. And so, you know, we have, you know, a number of both current and/or retirees that are currently taking our insurance to just monitor in terms of how, how that may or may not impact our overall, our overall number.
Yeah, thank you for the information. I feel like, obviously the same concerns as the previous line item, but, I mean, different, but, you know, similar, there just seems to consistently be excess in this line item. I understand the last year was like a little less than a hundred thousand, but the years prior, there was like close to four-hundred thousand and three-hundred thousand, so a little bit different in magnitude, but still, given the fact that our reserve is very healthy, it's just an area that I feel like could have like further eyes on, from my opinion, my opinion.
And, and we do work with both the town, Joe Swetki, our finance director, and our consultants. They're the ones who are really helping us to budget this line. We wouldn't necessarily do this all on our own. We want to get expert eyes on it and look at our claim trends over the last eighteen months or so and see where things are going, look at our catastrophic claims, see where those potentially could go. So, and then working with our, the Cigna, who also gives us projections. So there are many different eyes on this, and this is what was recommended to us as an increase, which is in kind of the world of insurance, a very small increase in the insurance line, health insurance line.
I just wanted to make a comment before we vote, and correct me if I'm wrong. So we're going through this budget book page by page and we're tentatively approving each page. It doesn't mean that adjustments can't be made after we've reviewed the whole budget.
Thank you.
So that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks for the clarification.
And just out of curiosity, I obviously work in the insurance industry, so this is coming from a place of, of knowledge with regards to reserves and not necessarily familiar with self-insurance, so that's, we'll take that to the side. When would we be able to realize potentially or take down some of these reserves to be able to help fund the insurance program itself?
We've done it many times.
Yeah.
Many times, especially when we have pretty significant increases. We have to then make the choice to bring that down. I don't think it would be the town's preference to do that often because it's a risk. But we always, per policy, have to have a certain level that we cannot ever
Right.
underfund. But that means in future years, if, if we're seeing a big budget increase and we're lowering the reserve, you know, we are setting up the future too. We're always thinking, I'm never thinking about just next year, I'm thinking about, you know, three years from now and how every decision we make has, has implications beyond the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But have we reduced in this line?
Yes.
Yes. The board has reduced this line in the past. And usually it's, it's all of us saying, this is about as far as we would go. Because, you know, we, we've done this for a while, we can see the ebbs and flows of this particular district and, and how claims play out here. But there are increased cost in health insurance that are, that's why in my presentation, I kept saying over and over again, the economy, because I think all of us are feeling, you know, like you go to the grocery store, you go here, it's the same for us, but a larger magnitude, a larger, you know, we are It's the same for us, but a larger magnitude, a larger, you know, we are facing higher costs in every budget line that we're currently, you know, dealing with just in this year's budget. It's the same for health insurance. The costs are increasing at a rapid rate.
Yeah, I can absolutely appreciate that that comment, because that's across the industry. You know, it's all inflationary, where claims costs are escalating everywhere. So I'm familiar with that. So thank you for the color.
All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Bill still abstaining? All right, and then we'll move on to page nineteen. I need a motion to tentatively approve page nineteen, life insurance, long-term disability and other, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion. Second, sorry.
Right. Discussion, go ahead.
Okay, so this is, there, less on this page, really. It's based on whatever our trends are that we're seeing in terms of life insurance. You know, we did have, we did see a slight increase last year as well, based on the teacher contract. So that was a negotiation piece in the teacher contract. So this year, the request is for two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars or an eight thousand, seven hundred, forty-four dollar difference, resulting in a 3.42% increase.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Bill is still abstaining? And then we have one more. If you could go to page twenty-one. I will need a motion to tentatively approve page twenty-one, retirement contributions in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we had our pens out earlier, and so this is where the pens come out again. So if we have a retirement announcement, there's a reduction in one area, but actually still an overall reduction based on the retirement trends from this year versus last year, but nonetheless a change. And so when a when a teacher does announce their retirement, contractually honored before February one, there is a retirement stipend that is awarded in its place. And so with the announcement of that additional retirement, the twenty-four, twenty-five request would now be one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars or a dollar change of negative one thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars or a change of negative point eight percent.
So I'll need a new motion to tentatively approve page twenty-one, retirement contributions in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, bill is still abstaining. And I think at this point, we can bring Mr. Becker back. We missed you, Bill.
Thank you all. Thanks, Andrea.
Yep. So we'll be back on page six.
Page six, thank you. All right, so can I get a motion to tentatively approve page six, directors, in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so there are some nuances to this specific page that I that I want to call your attention to. As you can see, there's a large dollar change there. And, you know, Kathy alluded to the staffing plans a bit in her presentation already. So this this area covers system-wide support in a variety of areas, as you can see on the bottom there. You know, the majority of this increase, however, should be noted that as a placeholder, and this is the same as in years past, that we hold for negotiations. We don't, again, we don't know where those negotiations will end up, so, you know, you put aside a reserve there. But we do have negotiations coming up just in a few short weeks, commencing with our non-certified bargaining unit. So that covers a variety of employees within the district, paraprofessionals, tutors, custodians, clerical staff. So that our FPSU is a wide range of our of our employees and district. And so a majority of the the dollar change here is a result of that. In addition, these are not new to the board. We discussed these positions last year. Unfortunately, these positions were cut. One is a proposal for a director of residency and security, and the other is for an addition of an end-user technician that would be in addition to our technology staff here. The needs for both of those areas have continued to grow. I'm happy to speak more on that if questions arise, but, you know, if you're asking me, I think these are critically important positions for the district. As I shared last year, you know, residency and security currently, Sam Kilpatrick, myself, Matt Ross, along with our police department, which we think is a pretty great team. However, you know, the needs for security continue to be significant. I attend along typically with Sam and Lieutenant Corey Vincent, or another rep from our police department. We have regional security meetings for the central Connecticut area, and so I'm happy to attend. I find them highly beneficial. It's something that I have seen as a priority since I became an educator and continue to have a focus on. However, I sit around the room and am joined by directors of security from many, many districts, many of which are smaller than ours. And I just see it as an area that would benefit. When you add the residency component in, which is an area I want to focus on, you know, across the state, you know, our our taxpayers fund Farmington residents to to attend our public schools. You know, right now, the the residency obligation is under our special services office, but it is very challenging, you know, and the potential to have a centralized registration system would ensure that instead of each individual school, schools still hold a responsibility in obviously registering and onboarding students, but having one office that would be responsible for looking at registration documents, verifying residency, following up on residency, I, you know, you know, we've started to track things like, you know, if, you know, if documentation needs updating, making sure that we have somebody who's able to follow up on those. You know, when you think about our per pupil expenditure, along with any other needs that might arise for students that are here, there there is an assumption at least that that there could be a realized savings elsewhere if we are, you know, if we are more diligent and observant of residency trends. And we're seeing this in many other districts. I, you know, I've, I've, last year, when I started working on this project, when I came on board, I went to other districts, I met with the professionals in those districts to look at their systems and operations around this. And and they had indicated that they, you know, again, we we welcome all students to our district, but you have to be a resident of Farming to attend to attend our public schools. And so there are districts that are similar to ours and around ours that are that have re-engaged in building systems around this that has that has helped in this area. The last thing I'll say is that before the end of the year, we expect our, so now I'm flipping between residency and the security side, this job would be responsible for both. But, you know, we we expect before the end of the year for our ten-year security audit to be completed. That'll be something that we look at confidentially. I can tell you, when when the consultant was here visiting, we received many questions around who is, like, who, where is your director of of security? So while I don't have the completed report, I expect, based on the questioning and the feedback we receive, that that'll be something at some point that that will at least be a recommendation. It'll be for the board to consider whether or not to add it. So those are my thoughts to start.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Does it have to be the level of a director? Or, I mean, probably salary-wise, doesn't make major change, but is is it just?
So we compare, we also polled these positions from a variety of places. Really, the salaries range from a building to district-level administrator to, you know, so we tried to, we're on the lower end of that. So we, you know, we expect probably between eighty and ninety thousand as a twelve-month position for this. You know, like I said, there are some districts that are paying, you know, upwards of one-twenty, one-thirty, and so on, but we're hoping that that this as an initial starting point can attract, you know, a professional with the expertise that that we would want. You know, you know, it varies, but you're often looking at potential retirees and some sort of security law enforcement, you know, that that type of background that would come into one of these positions and and really be our liaison. It doesn't mean we, our relationship with the police department is by far remarkable in terms of how other districts operate, and we don't want to lose that, but we want to have another partner that will help. And then somebody who can represent the district in any kind of needs as it relates to, again, security and residency.
No, I fully see the importance of it. I was just curious on the level.
Any other questions? Go.
So I fully see the importance of security, too. That's like my number one priority, obviously, when we're talking about our kids, you want to make sure they're safe. So I'm just trying to reconcile who, where do these jobs of this of this FTE currently, you mentioned a few different things, like you said, for the residency, like, is that like more of like the admins at the district, like the different schools will do it now? Who currently does, I guess, the tasks that this job would do, like currently? For so for the residency component, you kind of touched on that, and then the security, you kind of touched, is there?
So the residency component, registration for schools, happens at the school itself, and there would still be that component. So but like each school, so at the high school, it's the counseling, the counseling secretary that that takes on registration and then moves that along with the principal. At the at the elementary schools, it's typically the head secretary at the elementary school, but they're, so they're responsible for all the onboarding. And then we have our, you know, our centralized data specialist as well, who will then submit that to the state. But again, I think with, you know, the increased responsibilities of more and more and more, I just think it's something we could do better. And and again, in looking at what other districts are doing, there are certainly identifying areas that probably were missed without this. And so and then on the security side, Ted Donahue, it used to reside under his leadership. Upon his retirement, and and I've always been a partner in that, upon his retirement, I've worked on that with, like I said, Sam and Matt, and then we partner with the police department as well. I would say that that team of individuals currently works collaboratively. You know, Sam handles the training and preparation of our security monitors who work in each school. But again, I think it's an area where, you know, Sam also manages all of our facilities, all of our custodians, you know, spends countless hours on our new building and all of our major projects and capital projects. It's an area that I think, you know, I want to be able to say we have somebody whose primary focus is this, and and that's really, I think, where the ask is coming from.
Yeah, I would just also add that our principals take on a pretty significant role, both in security and in residency and registration. I talk to them all the time about the challenges that they're faced with, because you really can't say to the head secretary, you're going to deal with this residency issue. It really is the principal who deals with it. If we had centralized registration, it would really be the centralized registration that deals with challenges with registration and with residency over time. You know, we're a highly sought-after district, and so we are seeing a very, a large increase of residency issues here. And we're also experiencing a lot of multi-generations within one home. And that's also, you know, it adds a lot of paperwork to any residency issue or residency, sorry, registration and then follow-up for residency. So if we had questions about whether the child is still, and the law is very specific, the child has to reside in the home and sleep every night in that home. And if that criteria is not met, then the, we run into a lot of challenges and residency conflicts. And to put this on our principals, when we already rank in a position where we have fewer administrators than other school districts, I think we're expecting quite a lot of our school-based leaders when it comes to these particular areas.
Thank you, yeah. I I'm just thinking more along the lines of what Nadine was saying, like if we could think creatively on this type of role, because I see the benefit of it based on what you're describing, but like, is there even an opportunity to elevate someone that touches these items now for like a cost saving? So like elevate the position to give more capacity? Obviously, that builds, you know, that builds a sense of, you know, worth for the position, too, but maybe it's not to the eighty or ninety thousand position that this is? I don't know, I'm just trying to think creatively. And then, Scott, one more question, because I feel like you talked about the one FTE for the director of residency and security. There is the other one FTE, end-user technician. Can you just touch upon what that role is and who currently does that as well?
Sure, we do have end-user technicians, and I'm staring at Matt Ross over there. Matt, I don't know if you want to add more to this. I would say, I would just say to start, you know, and and probably as we get more along, you know, we understand we're asking a lot in this budget and presenting a lot, but, you know, want to be, want to also be transparent about, you know, this idea of continuing to do more with less. And and I don't think we're, like, we we really, really, really stress over this budget and and coming to the town and making sure that we're responsible, but, you know, we also want to make sure that we are, we are competitive and that we can offer the the level of service and support that our residents have come to expect. And so I I say that with the caveat that Matt's department, in comparison to what other, again, what other districts are offering, is very, very thin. And and, you know, I I hope that Matt is not, you know, Matt has a great team, but I I say to Matt all the time, like, Matt, I want, you know, Matt is running around doing some things that I think another technician could do, but he's just an all-hands-on-deck individual and and leader. And so I I say that, and then I offer Matt, maybe if you can add the technical pieces a little bit more strongly than I can.
So part of the, and thanks, Scott, because, I mean, the whole team is an all-hands-on-deck team. This position is actually part of a longer-term strategic staffing plan for the for technology. When I arrived here, we only had three technicians, and that was when we started bringing Chromebooks in. And we've been slowly adding as necessary. COVID put a big stress on the team in terms of the number of individuals. Part of this strategy is not only being able to to provide the the best level of service to our teachers and students, but also to build depth in our team, because we have changeover. And I mean, we've had changeover in in our IT staff, pretty significant changeover just in the last two years. So part of this is building that depth, but also and and building depth and experience, because the, I look at those end-user technicians as we're bringing them in, and they can advance within our organization as well as they learn. The other part is just making sure that we can continue to deliver the right level of service to our teachers and students. We try our best to get to the number of IT tickets that come in on a daily basis. We average somewhere in the neighborhood of three thousand to thirty-five hundred documented tickets. That's not the pulling us aside as we're walking through the hallway.
Yeah, that would be me, right?
I would say I'm good for a hundred. Matt, I had one this morning, I put in with.
Those ones aren't always documented. What I'm talking, I'm talking about actual documented, submitted into our ticket system between three thousand and thirty-five hundred per year. So it really, in order to make sure that we can deliver that level of service, this position's key. It's been on the docket for several years. It got to the board last year, but again, given where we are with with budgets, we pulled it back. I'm bringing it back forward again, but it is part of a long-term staffing strategy.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I want to criticize Andrea.
Matt, so are you looking to promote somebody to a director's position and then hire an end, another end-user technician?
No.
Or are you looking to hire a director?
No, no, so the director of residency is separate than the
No, I know.
The end-user technician is an additional staff member. So as it stands right now, there's myself, there's a network manager, there's two system administrators, one of which provides some level of backup to the network manager, and then there's two current end-user technicians. This would be adding a third end-user technician to handle the day-to-day service out in our schools to teachers and students. And I'm still doing a lot of cross-training. One of our sysadmins was an end-user technician who was promoted in when we had an, somebody who left the the team over the past couple of years. So this is an additional team member to the IT So, this is an additional team member to the IT staff.
So, I guess...
Not a director level, I think.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I was asking, does this person belong under director?
The IT staff, so that's where they fall in the budgeting process. They fall under the director's account.
Okay, yeah, they're not all directors, no.
What type of salary does this person, like a...
You'll hear a little more, right now, we're targeting 50. I mean, again, we, I'm constantly looking at the trends. We also run really, really low in comparison to districts throughout the state, and you'll probably hear more about that afterwards. But, you know, in order to bring somebody in with the right level of experience and to keep them, that's about where we're looking at in order to be competitive. That, you know, it is tough to get somebody with the right skill set at less than that.
Yeah, and they often, then, we train them, and they leave us. And we put, that's a huge investment in someone to train, someone to only then, a year later, leave, because they can get a pretty substantial increase somewhere else. So, you know, we are really careful about how we budget these new positions, but there always is a risk of underfunding the position and then just losing the person after investing so much in their training and time in that training. I would just also say, I know, you know, could we get creative on the Director of Residency and Security? So, we've done that for 10-plus years. It's always the person who really led security is always our facilities person, so it was Tim Harris, and now it's Sam, and then with the support of our business administrator at one time, now, you know, Assistant Superintendent. Ted Donahue really was the person who would, you know, like, help us with security plans and that type of thing, and making sure that we were, you know, up to date with, you know, with the things we needed to be up to date with from kind of that, the plans that we submit to the state. We all, every school has an all-hazards plan, the district, you know, we take that very seriously and in many ways led the way with that plan when it first was required. But, we've been doing that creative type of, like, let's add it to someone else's position. But, given how this has evolved over time, it is time, and we've requested it last year, and we understood it was a very difficult budget year for the town, but it really is time to have someone focus on these two big buckets that are complex and require someone's attention.
I would just want to add that, kind of piggyback on what you just said, five years ago, six years ago, we didn't have any need for this, but we absolutely have a need for it now. I'm not comfortable running a school district or a lot where the job of security is so diffuse, in other words, if there's not one person you can pick up a phone and call, that you've got to bring a roomful of people together to have a conversation about a security issue. So I think it's important to have a point person there, and that person should be at a director level. To that point, though, as we said, not everybody here is a director, and it's just all under the salary account. And as for the residency issue, to give other perspective, the town of Farmington was involved in a significant residency dispute that went to the Connecticut Supreme Court, so, and that was in part, you know, it was a long slog, and it involved many people across multiple buildings over many months, and to have someone at central office be responsible for that issue, I think is also of value, both in terms of cost savings and efficiencies with allowing the people that we pay to do other things to focus on those other things. So with that being said, can I get a vote? All those in favor of approving Page Six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote unanimously. Just also, as a matter for Robert's rules, just to kind of remind everybody, at every line item, each member is allowed two questions, and each question and each discussion is limited to about 10 minutes. So I just want to make sure, and it's not because the questions aren't valuable or important. If for some reason you have more questions than the two that you're permitted under Robert's rules, you wipe them down and then submit them offline, and then we can talk about it. But, that's just in the interest of keeping the meeting moving. Thank you. Onto Page Seven. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve Page Seven Advisors and Coaches in the amount of $584,034?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so as you can see on the description on the bottom, this, there are actually two pages that we'll go to that address our clubs and activities commitment here in Farmington. I do want to note here that the negotiations committee is aware of this. When the FEA contract was approved, one area, and Kim is nodding her head, because I think Kim has been, this has been a...
Well-versed.
...a circuitous issue for 20-plus years, maybe longer, is really working on, the contract has, you know, our coaches for our high school athletics, are, they're, that's articulated in the contract, and a specific set of clubs and activities is outlined, but then over time, as you know, we have a robust program, in particular at 712, in terms of what's offered after school. Over time, these items have been budgeted for in different ways, and with, but not in the contract per se. And so, when the contract was agreed upon, there was a, there was a separate agreement that said we would engage in informal discussion with FEA representation, which we have, and it's been quite productive and positive, around trying to develop a system that would better articulate the cost for these, but also make them equitable across the district in terms of the amount of commitment and recognizing that. And so, that is not finalized, however, it is, it is well on its way to getting there. I think, you know, we've been meeting for, in this process, for over a year now to just outline what that looks like, and so, I thought I would highlight that, because we did, based on, based on where the conversations are going, we projected what that would be. The hope is, moving forward, principals at the school level, using a guideline document, would be able to budget and request accordingly for what their needs are for clubs and activities. So this, this will cover that. I don't anticipate, I anticipate this to be hopefully around it. We also use zero-based budgeting, trying to look at what's being expended for clubs and activities, both on this page, I can't recall, when I get to the other page, I'll remind you that we're at that as well, but, but trying to do that. Kathy, I don't...
And I'd just like to add, so, in the contract, when you have a list of clubs, and it's this stagnant thing that just sits there for years and years and years, it really doesn't reflect what we do every day. Our clubs are very much, come from our students, what they're interested in. So there's, it's very fluid. We could be running a club one year and not running a club the next, and a club goes through a process of, we have to see that there's real interest before we put a club in a budget. So every year, we're looking at clubs with a zero-based lens. So we really, the best approach here was to have a criteria and not have a list, because the list changes so much. So I think it's shifting to more of a criteria for clubs, so that when principals see the interest, there's enough students who we know in the coming year will participate in that, they can propose that in their budget. Sometimes we say yes, sometimes we say no, we're going to give it more time, because there's a lot of reductions before it comes to you. We have a lot of reductions in this budget before it even reaches the board's table. So, that gives us the ability to give it some time, potentially budget it, it might not get to the budget, it may get to the budget, but it's very fluid, because it's based on what our kids, our students want and are looking for in clubs, and that changes depending on our students. So, I just say that because there is a real need to go to more of a criteria than a list of clubs that are stagnant.
Discussion. Questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto Page Eight, Teacher Substitutes. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve Page Eight Teacher Substitutes in the amount of $768,701?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
So the 2425 request for substitutes is $768,701 or a $128,077 increase, resulting in a 19.99% increase. And just to highlight in the bottom there, this account reflects an increase to daily substitutes that meets a mandate from the state legislature in terms of the raise for minimum wage. In addition to, we did have a set of substitutes that were being carried on the ESAR grant, which is coming to an end, so this also reflects a transition back over.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? Can I get, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Onto Page Nine, Tutors. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve Page Nine, Tutors, in the amount of $658,380?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
The 2425 request for tutors is $658,380 or an increase of $71,323 or a 12.15% overall change. And here, the account reflects a variety of tutors. In particular, I would say the driver for the increase is an increase in ELL tutor hours based on student need. You may recall attending a presentation from Veronica Rusak, our Director of Curriculum, along with Nicole Cotoya, who oversees the ELL program, and, you know, I think that was quite a compelling case for where our ELL needs are rising and a driver of that.
I just want to add, when I first got involved, the ELL was kind of almost like an afterthought in a lot of respects, and now it's become such an important driver to how we spend money on this line. So, any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by...
Nadine, I was just going to say, this particular line item, like, it seemed to have gone up quite a bit from last year, from like 2.94 all the way to 12%. So, I mean, definitely compelling based on what we've heard, but wow, what a big increase.
The other thing to note, I probably should have added, is that this ebbs and flows with grant, grant funding as well, so some of the costs are offset by state grants as well.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Page Ten, AIDS, Instructional Support Personnel in the amount of, sorry, may I have a motion to tentatively approve Page Ten, AIDS and Instructional Support Personnel, in the amount of $3,186,716?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so the request for next school year is $3,186,716 or an increase of $3,453 or 0.11%. I think this is another area that I'll start with what I shared after the comment, where grant funding, again, in particular IDEA grant, where we're able to, depending on that appropriation, move more paraprofessionals or special ed support staff on or off, depending on the allocation of grant funding, which is, which we rely on. And again, a reminder that, you know, that the FPSU contract will be negotiated this winter and spring. There is a request, you'll see it as 3.72 FTE, you know, on the chart in your budget book. That's because one paraprofessional is 0.93 FTE based on the hours that they work. So 3.72 really means a requested increase of four paraprofessionals. The last thing I'll say, unless questions come in, is that this is a highly volatile area. We have continued to see an increase of students moving into district. It should be noted that when a student moves in and their individualized education plan requires services, we must accept the services from, you know, over time, if we, our goal is to build independence for students and to reduce their reliance on the need for adult support. However, you are mandated to provide the support that is required, and that happens quite often during the course of the year as well.
Discussion.
I was just pointing out on this one again, and I, similar to what I was mentioning on salaries in general, so if I look at the last two years of the financial statement, I know, Bill, you were not here for part of it, so I'm just looking at like the fiscal that ended 2223. In this bucket, we had an extra $350,000 left over, and then the year prior, we had $250,000. So, and I totally understand what you're saying about the volatility, and I know some of it is like contractual, but is there any room, just because we were seeing a trend for the last two years, that there's about $300,000 in excess in those, in that account, in that particular line item? Like, that's just where, you know, I'm looking for big bucket items where we can move things, I don't want to like cut a pencil for, you know, $10, but that just seems like a lot of money in the line item. So just calling that out as a call-out.
So, this would be an area, I would say, a couple of things, too, in response to that question. One being, it's a high turnover area, so there's a lot of volatility in, of, for one reason or another. We actually are, I think, quite competitive regionally in terms of how we compensate folks in this position. However, again, I think it's an area that is pretty significantly changing over. There are times, again, where we might realize a savings here and unfortunately have to go to that contractor line when we can't fill them, because the needs are so significant. And then the other piece, I would say, is when, when, when we're running over in other areas, we're always, we're consistently working with special services to look at what our grant allocations are, and sometimes moving, shifting those positions back to grant, so that we can realize the savings to cover an area where we might be over elsewhere, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on Page 11, to tentatively approve Office Personnel in the amount of $2,365,242.
Motion?
Nadine?
Oh, I'm sorry, second. I was reading the bottom line here.
That's all right. Discussion.
So that dollar change is an increase of $55,111 or a 2.39% increase. Again, these, many of these, the folks that are accounted here are part of the FPSU. I should have mentioned earlier, but this, the increase really reflects a request for a clerk that would work alongside with the residency and security. So this was also in the budget last year. You know, so this would be a team where a clerk, that way, if our, we assume that the person in the director role is going to be in schools, perhaps conducting residency investigations, and so we would want to staff the position with somebody in the office who can, who can be a support in a team. This is a common, you know, when I was looking at models, quite honestly, some of the districts now have a director and then an assistant director and multiple office staff, but we feel like this is the appropriate balance to get that, to get that system up and running, and thinking about building a system for the district that can, that can work over time there.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, can I get a motion to, oh, sorry, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Page 12, Nurses. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve Nurses' Services in the amount of $852,313?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
The dollar change here is an increase of $62,158, resulting in a 7.87% increase. Last year, I shared that we, for quite some time, had a partnership with the Simsbury Public Schools, where we, where we shared a district supervisor of nursing. That individual actually stayed on with us for the remainder of the year, but retired partway through the year from the Simsbury Public Schools. That partnership was then dissolved after Simsbury really felt that there was a need for someone to focus in their district, and we, of course, at the board, agreed on that and added there. So, it's a really small group in our community, but this amount reflects the 3% increase as well as the step increase for the nurses here, along with our supervisor.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Page 13. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve Cafeteria, Security Monitors, and Drivers in the amount of $663,857?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. Discussion.
This is an increase of $25,193 or a 3.94%. And really driven by ESER funding, we did have a monitor that was on ESER that we're looking to bring over into the operating budget. We did do, this was a line that typically ran over year after year after year. We did some hard work on zero-based budgeting last year, you may recall, to get this and to get this right. And so this really increases for that moveover that we do anticipate the continued need, and it's for here at FHS. In particular, when there's a likelihood that students will be parking in many areas not adjacent to the building.
Right.
So having additional supervision in those areas is important.
Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next one, page 14, custodial services. Can I get a motion tentatively approve custodial services in the amount of $2,704,82?
Motion, second.
So the dollar change here is $80,484 or a 3.07% change. And there's a few drivers of this. It's really more of a shifting around of non-certified staff and their classification and what bucket they fall in. And so that's, there's no addition to FTE in custodians. So there's some overtime coverage there, as you can read on the bottom. We also have an agreement with the town of Farmington. So when you're, you know, going to rec programs on the weekends and things like that, that the board is paying our custodians to open those buildings and be there. And then we have an agreement with the town of Farmington because many of those programs are not board-run programs.
Conversation, discussions, questions? This is the point every budget session where I call out and think, express the gratitude of the school board to our custodial services. We have the finest custodial services of any school district in the state, as far as I'm concerned. And they do such a great job, and I just want to express our gratitude here publicly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next, page 15, tentatively approve the summary of our staffing by category. Motion? Take a motion?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
Just, I'll add that these are the specific positions that we talked about in all the preceding meetings.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. One tab down, five to go. Next area that we'll be discussing is benefits. Assistant Superintendent Hurwitz will review the benefit series for us now, which reflects a 15.37% increase to our total budget. Scott.
All right, thank you. So the second object, as our chair had shared, is benefits. And you saw the percentage there. Overall, it's a 1.37% increase. This provides for 100% of what our expected, anticipated claims are, the administration, fees that we pay for employee health insurance, along with our high deductible HSA and co-insurance agreements, in addition to workers' compensation.
And I know the board has already considered several items in this area of the budget, so we'll move to page 19.
Before you go on, I just wanted to say, because we've already voted on page 21, which reflects an increase, the actual increase that you detailed is 1.48, correct? Scott?
Pardon?
Sorry. Just because we've already voted on page 21, which reflected an increase, so the actual percentage of the increase to the benefits is 1.48.
That's correct.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrea.
Yep.
Did you do 19? Oh, you did 19. I beg your pardon, right. Sorry. Page 20. Did you guys do FICA and Medicare on page 20?
Yeah, 21. You were on 22.
You guys did 20?
We did not do FICA.
Oh, we didn't.
Right. So we'll go to page 20, tentatively approve, page 20, FICA and Medicare in the amount of $1,506,999.
Motion, second.
This is a dollar change of an increase of $22,609 or 1.52%. And this is based on our payroll calculation and the zero-based budgeting.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go to page 22, unemployment insurance. Can I get a motion tentatively approve unemployment insurance in the amount of $39,114?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
Increase here of $1,139 or 3%. This is a line that shifts quite a bit year to year, but again, trending.
Got it. Questions, discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 23, workers' compensation. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve workers' compensation in the amount of $321,481?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
This is a flat approach here. We did spend less last year on this. It is volatile, so from year to year, depending on what happens, we work really hard to try to retrain and train and focus on different aspects of safety, health and safety, but, you know, that's the reason we left it flat based on what we expended last year, but knowing, again, from year to year, it can go up and down.
I have a question. Is that something that you shop to an insurance broker? How do we get workers' compensation?
Yeah, we work with Kerma, which is, supports a majority of municipalities around the state, and so they're our partner on workers' compensation and all of our liability insurances as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 24. May I get a motion tentatively approve other employee benefits in the amount of $2,200?
Motion, second.
This item is also flat, and this covers contractual benefit for our custodians for footwear.
It's always in the budget every year.
I know. It cracks me up.
Any questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we move on to services. Scott will now review the service series, which accounts for a 15.18% increase of the tot, I'm sorry, which accounts for 15.18% of the total budget. And this year, we have an 11.58% increase, as he will detail for us now.
Thank you.
Page 20, yeah, generally, go ahead. Sorry.
So this is another area where you see some volatility as we jump from page to page here. It reflects a variety of essential services for the district, including, but not limited to consultation, a variety of tuition costs, in particular for special education, along with major projects, which you already heard about in the January 8th board meeting, our summer school program, and then a variety of district applications and systems around technology. And we will spend some time on transportation and professional development as we go through this area as well.
Okay. I'll call everyone, their attention to page 25, summer teachers. May I get a motion tentatively approve, page 25, in the amount of $468,100?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
This reflects a dollar change of $3,100 or 0.67%. This account will no longer, after this year, be offset by ESER funding. I will say as well, if you look at our financials, we were significantly over and have gone significantly over in this area. However, we did do some internal looking at reallocating, maybe a better place to call out some of that spending as well.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 26, may I get a motion tentatively approve public relations services in the amount of $45,400?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a flat item. It covers our newsletters and, you know, a variety of community-wide events.
So this will reflect, for example, expenditures in the communications committee?
Exactly.
Yes. I'm saying, you had a question about like where some of the resources come from, so, okay. All right, so motion's been approved, motion's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next, it's page 27, student services. May I get a motion to approve student services in the amount of $53,143?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
An increase of $2,575, overall 5.09%. This covers a variety of orientation programs, transitions, college and career readiness. And really, the sole driver of this increase is an escalation in cost for rental equipment for the FHS commencement, which you voted on the date at the last board meeting.
Okay. Discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, onto page 28, other student services in the amount of $88,370.
Motion, second.
Discussion.
This is a dollar increase of $11,545 or 15.03%. And this is the other page I was referring to that accounts for clubs and activities and programming that we discussed earlier. And this was really a zero-based budgeting approach and looking at what was being expended, also planning for, I do think this is an area where, as Kathy mentioned earlier, building a system in place to look at how we're, you know, how we're compensating clubs and activities. So this is the other area where you'll see spending out of that.
Scott, will the, in negotiations with teachers, will there be some discussion about this as part of that? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, so, yeah, we've been working closely with FEA representation, and Kim and I actually have another meeting next week, and then when we get together with our negotiations committee in February, this will be a topic that we'll discuss. But, yeah, I think they're all aware, the membership is aware that this is, that we've been working on.
Okay.
I just have a clarifying question. Is that okay?
Yeah, please.
So this account doesn't reflect the stipends, it reflects the cost to run the program?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Any other questions?
So just to follow up on what Andrea said, because I was thinking similarly, the other thing you mentioned was like the staffing of those programs, but this is more to cover just like the actual, like something that the program does type of thing?
But, so when a club comes on board, though, like, one of the considerations principles have to make when approving it is what is the cost to staff it, what is the cost to run it as well? So exactly, you know, it would cover materials, supplies, things like that as well.
Okay.
But also, there are, I do think there is some payment for different clubs to run that has come out of this account as well.
Well, if the club wants to go do something, they gotta pay an entry fee or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, pages 29 through 31, professional education services. May I get a motion tentatively approve professional education services in the amount of $835,500?
Motion, second.
Discussion, Scott.
So this is an increase of $97,140 or a 13.16% increase. And as you look at the description below, this is really a very broad bucket that covers a variety of volatile areas, ranging from consultation with, you know, certain partners such as the CCSN, you know, special services program. We have offset the increase of this account, so this might be a good place just to mention where we apply excess costs. You may recall from the last board meeting that excess costs is continuing to be underfunded, and, you know, even this year, we expect potentially less. So we take a conservative approach when planning for excess costs, but we do, before bringing the budget forward, we do apply what we expect and, you know, project in revenue through excess costs. And so this would be one of the areas where we applied the revenue. To the special services side, Kim will talk, or in the following pages, you know, you'll see accounts that also relate to our professional development needs for teachers. So that's the other side of the bucket here as well, that Kim can certainly speak to as well.
So the curriculum projects on the following two pages were recently reviewed with the members of the Board of Education Curriculum Committee. These projects really represent the priorities that come to us at Central Office from our content area teacher leaders. We, as a school district, continuously update and revise our curriculum to reflect most current knowledge in the area, in the field, as well as alignment with our vision of the global citizen. So this is something we take great pride in, keeping our curriculum current and innovative and most up to date. So you see here on these two pages, the curriculum projects we intend to pursue over this coming summer.
Is there any legislative component to this? In other words, is there stuff that comes down from Hartford that kind of adds to this? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Thank you. There are aspects of the curriculum, for example, even Capstone and Aspire, that originated in legislation that all districts were required to implement a mastery-based diploma assessment. And so from that legislation, we began to initiate our Capstone and Aspire senior and sometimes junior projects that student, all students must complete. There are other mandates, such as our Black and Latino Studies course, that are expected to be implemented on a timeline that the legislation, that legislators dictate to us that must be, and currently, we're responding to a financial literacy mandate that all students must graduate with a course in financial literacy. So yes, there are definitely aspects of what goes into this budget that come to us from state mandates.
When you say this budget, you mean specifically this line item? This object?
Yes, this line item, yes.
Right. Any other questions?
I was gonna follow up on what Bill just said, so just to clarify, so if it says, like, because I'm reading it, like, department-recommended course revisions, is that necessarily a state mandate, or it just might be that, or it's all taken into consideration, the state mandates, and then the department would recommend this line item because of that? That's what you're saying?
No, I want to be clear, some of these things would come from...
But not all of them?
Not all of them.
Okay. And then my follow-up would be, does this amount, because it's under services, not under like supplies or anything like that, what is this exactly covering? Is this covering if there is like a textbook change, and then that's the amount associated with the textbook change, or, I'm just trying to comprehend what this actually is covering within the curriculum?
Right. This covers stipends that teachers receive to write these units of study or these revisions to the curriculum. It is not a budget that addresses textbooks or supplies or materials related to these curriculum areas.
Okay, so this is strictly for just the rewriting of the curriculum? This does not take into account the actual, like, materials that would need it for the students? That, I'm assuming, will cover in the next section?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
That's a good question. Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 32, supporting educational services. May I get a motion to tentatively approve supporting educational services in the amount of $30,168?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
A $1,010 increase or 3.46%. This covers a variety of district-wide outreach programs, as you can see below. We also do utilize Title IV, Title I grant funding to offset here. The main driver of this is, and something you'll see next year in the budget as well, I don't expect a large amount, but we are preparing for the NEASC accreditation process. NEASC, as you may recall, when I was principal of the high school, did give us an extension on our accreditation because we have a new building going, and so they decided to wait until we were up and running. But that's a slight funding increase to get ready for the 2025 NEASC. But that's, um, a slight funding increase to get ready for the 2025 NEASC visit.
Just as a preview, uh, at some point, you know, if you're, if you're up for it, we'll have an opportunity as board members, some of us will actually have an opportunity to meet with these NEASC folks. Um, it's a really interesting conversation. I was able to participate in it last time they were through. It's, it's, it's really cool. Uh, okay. Um, any other conversation, questions, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, page thirty-three. May I get a motion to tentatively approve Professional Employee Training and Development in the amount of a hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
Thirty, thirty-six thousand four hundred forty-three dollar increase resulting in a twenty-three point oh five percent increase. Uh, and as you can see below, this covers training, uh, for a variety of programs as it relates to school development plans and our, and our Board of Ed goals. Uh, also covers, uh, state mandate that is no longer, uh, stipended by the state. And a hope to restore funds that were significantly decreased, uh, in last year's budget.
Scott, can you describe a little bit more about what a mentor stipend would be? And why it's mandated by, mandated by the team program?
Uh, Kim...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to share as much as I can.
That's fine.
You answer it, but Kim oversees it.
Please.
Um, when we hire a beginning teacher, uh, we assign that beginning teacher a mentor, who can be their kind of go-to support. That mentor teacher is paid a stipend of five hundred dollars. That stipend used to be, um, covered from state funding. We used to receive funding for that, and they no longer provide that funding for us, so it comes out of our budget now. It is not discretionary. In other words, in order to go through this team program as a beginning educator, um, you attend and work through team modules in order to achieve the next level of certification. And also, you are supported with the help of a mentor.
I understand there's some discussion in Hartford that they may try to streamline that process a little more, make it a little bit more efficient. Because as I understand, there's various levels of teaching, not certification, but recognition, right? Can you talk a little bit about what that program is like, where how, how, how challenging it is for a new teacher to become fully, like, a master teacher? Can you describe? I'm not using the words correctly, but you know what I'm, you know what I'm asking you.
Um, well, it is challenging. I mean, it's a challenge to be a beginning teacher and then also being required to achieve these, uh, success in these team modules in order to get to the next level of certification. But I feel strongly that where we have customized the team program in Farmington to align nicely with everything that we're doing at the school and district level. In other districts, teachers go through this team, uh, program kind of on their own. They have a mentor, yes, but they're completing, writing papers according to the state requirements. We, uh, selected an option where we took on all of that work internally. And I think it benefits our beginning teachers, because they work with Veronica, they work with me, they work with, uh, local teacher leaders and get a lot of support. So even though they are completing these projects, they're doing so in alignment with the work that they would also have to be doing, uh, connected to school development plans and, um, their, the, the Farmington teacher evaluation model. So we say to them, you have two goals to complete for team, you have two goals to complete for teacher evaluation in Farmington. They can be the same goals, whereas in other districts, they might not be.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what I was getting at, okay.
They're giving some relief, uh, for those certification payments. You know, that was just recently, um, announced at the state level, um, which, you know, with such a teacher shortage here, any ways in which we can make this an easier process for new teachers makes complete sense financially as well. I will just say Veronica and I do tenure observations. So if you're an experienced teacher coming to Farmington, you attain tenure here after two years. If you're brand-new, it's a four-year process. And we, after we observe, we always ask, you know, what, what was something, or what are the things that really made a difference when you transitioned to Farmington? You could see by my presentation, we have very clear core documents, very clear, uh, vision in, in this district. So at times, a transition might be a little more challenging, you know, because we, uh, you wanna learn all those things right away. Um, and, uh, we get this, uh, the feedback, um, and, and we always ask, what could we do better when it comes to induction? But I have to just say that what Kim and Veronica do with team, it is consistently something that I hear from our teachers who go through team, that it was such an amazing capacity-building process. And, you know, we know those students are in front of our students, we wanna give them as much support. And that team process, I think, is exemplary here. But they also talk about our, um, our literacy, math specialist, our department leaders, their team, their principal meets with them in their first years. It, it's just a really nice opportunity for me to hear about the level of support we're giving new faculty members in Farmington is really, uh, extraordinary. And I will also say, those with experience who come here say, it's like no other place they've ever been. So I just wanna commend, uh, Kim, Veronica, our principals, and, uh, the mentors, our teams, our teacher leaders. It absolutely is a focus here, um, to build the knowledge and skills of our faculty when they arrive, but as they continue their career here, so.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up on what you're saying, and I'm just new, so learning it. I love the program, I understand the value. In terms of the dollars, though, like, I'm just trying to understand this bucket of line item for two hundred thousand dollars. Like Kim mentioned, it's a five hundred dollar stipend. I mean, no problem, that makes sense. But where is, what, what is, like, where are these, what is this money for? Like, a stipend, when you bring in to do these classes, is someone being paid to do them? Like, I'm just confused what this bucket is actually for.
This bucket represents the entire in-service, uh, expenditure for all teachers, not just new teachers.
Okay.
So, when we bring in an international speaker about math to talk to all of our K-8 math teachers, it comes from this bucket.
Okay.
When we, um, have summer institute training, where we have forty-five people coming to an innovation in teaching and learning institute in the summer, teachers are not on contract in the summer, so we need to pay them to come to that training, um, that's, it comes out of this bucket. So anything that we do here, sometimes we need to bring in, um, trainers, because we have some mandated training that must be done. All of that comes out of this in-service account.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
And it is primarily driven by restoration. We, this was one of the accounts we reduced and underfunded last year, uh, in, in, for this year's budget. So that's why you see that increase.
Any other questions? Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page thirty-four, Other Professional Services. May I have a motion to tentatively approve Other Professional Services in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand sixty-eight dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a nine thousand one hundred seventy-three dollar increase, or two point nine five percent. You can see this is another very broad category of, of professional services that are, um, that are utilized by the district. And we trended this, this is another one that, you know, is, is quite viable.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Discussion? All those, no, hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Um, that might be a good time to take a little bit of a break. Um, can I, do I need a motion to take a break? All right. Let's take a five-minute break, guys. All right. We're gonna return to our process, and we're gonna go to page thirty-five. May I get a motion to tentatively approve, page thirty-five, Data Processing Services, in the sum of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a thirteen thousand four hundred twelve dollar increase. As you can see, this is another area where we have relied on the S R grant in the past. I think the best way to describe this, um, this bucket is all of our major data systems, budget sense, Power School. They all, um, our cameras, they all sit in, in this area as well, so.
Any, any questions? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, just as a, uh, parenthetically, what I'm thinking is we'll go to about twelve-thirty, and we can have lunch at that point. And then, so hopefully, let's sort of get as much done before then as we can. Okay. Um, next, page thirty-six, Water. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve water charges in the amount of seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars?
Motion, second.
It's an increase of four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, or six point six eight percent. Uh, a few of these coming up ahead, we do collaborate with the town on, and, and work together to, um, for the cost prediction.
Any questions? Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page thirty-seven, uh, can I get a motion to tentatively approve, uh, sewer charges in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a change of one thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars, or six point five percent. And again, another area where we collaborate with the town.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page thirty-eight, Disposal Services. Can I get a motion to approve disposal services in the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a four thousand dollar increase, four point four four percent. Honestly, an area to watch as, as something that will continue to, we predict, and, and talking to town, will continue to grow in cost. We did, um, we did seek a cost-saving measure here last year by entering a joint, um, a joint contract with the town when we went out to bid to try to lower our costs. We, we have saw every opportunity to do so when, when it's available.
Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page thirty-nine, uh, Equipment Repair. May I get a motion to tentatively approve Equipment Repair in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a four hundred and ninety-five dollar change, point four six percent.
Questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page forty, may I get a motion to tentatively approve Building Repair in-house in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
So this is a reduction of thirty-four thousand dollars, or negative eight point six five percent. I, I think something I'll just lay out over the next several pages is with a brand-new high school coming onboard and utilizing a zero-based budgeting approach, you are going to see reductions in many of these areas. We should note, though, that these aren't long-term reductions, you know, as we progress through time, we are gonna have the need for building repairs coming back onboard, or, you know, some other, you know, our contracts where, you know, they're all gonna be certified when we, when we set out, so we're gonna save. But then over time, we're gonna have those increases returned. So I think that's just worth noting.
I have, I have a dumb question. Um, is, and as part of the new, uh, high school, uh, how much of the stuff that's being put in is like, subject to warranties? Like, the HVAC system? How, how does that work?
All of it.
Okay. So all, so there'll be warranties that'll protect us, at least for the first five, six, seven years if stuff goes down?
No. I mean, you'll have a, when I say that, I mean, that's a, that's a one-year building warranty that we're gonna have. So anything that's, that's moving within that one year, the expectation would be the contract is back in the system.
Okay.
Um, aside from that, there may be various different warranties on different components. Um, but we should expect to see a lot of this coming back.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. And just for the record, that was Sam, our, our building.
And I'm gonna invite Sam to use many of these next items.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Sam's another great person to have by your side, you know, so it's good.
Okay. Any questions here? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page forty-one, uh, Building Repair Contractors. May I get a motion to tentatively approve that line item in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
So this is another area where you can see that, um, the dollar change is a decrease. Uh, how, you know, this covers a variety of contracted repairs that we have, um, HVAC and all the other operational systems. Um, and again, another area where I think the high school is, is a driver here, but, but we should expect a return in, in future years.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This is why you're here, Sam, for the next couple. Okay. So our next will be, we're gonna ask everyone to turn attention to page forty-two through fifty, uh, for the budget object, Building Repair Projects, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. May I get a motion to tentatively approve that?
Motion, second.
Discussion, please.
There's a dollar change here of twelve thousand seventy-nine in the increase, uh, seven point four two percent. You may recall that we reviewed these proposals, uh, during Sam's presentation on January eighth. So these are the major projects, which are guided by the K-12 Facilities Review and, um, a variety of our security audits and, and reviews that have taken place over time. And you can see the detail of what those are in the pages that follow. Are there any questions?
Is there any questions on that one? Again, this was presented to us previously at, at a prior meeting. Uh, okay. Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, page fifty-one, may I get a motion to tentatively approve, uh, lease of building in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
The three hundred dollar increase here, um, which shows a thirteen point six four percent. And this is really the, um, covers the rental fee for the, the old school and robotics storage. Um, so you might say, well, hey, we're, old school and robotics are moving to the high school. Um, next year, that will be the home of the IT department in Matt Ross, um, as they will be without a home when this building is taken over this summer, and their expected move to the central office, which needs another year of renovation. Um, I would also add that we have had, uh, some initial discussions with the town and the town manager's office. There is a desire for, uh, the district to continue to occupy space as it becomes available in town for, um, you know, the many programs that we have around the district, or the opportunity to, say, add another preschool space or, or some other program. So, um, I'm not sure that it'll be this over time, but that's what it covers for now. And I thought it'd be a chance just to share a bit more info around, um, our desire to continue to maintain space as it becomes available.
Any questions? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, excuse me, page fifty-two, Lease of Equipment. May I get a motion to tentatively approve lease of equipment, um, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
So this is remaining flat. Uh, we participate in a consortium, actually, I think I have a meeting this week or next, Beth and I. Um, we're actually potentially hoping for a slight savings in our, this mostly covers our, our copy release is a, is a big part of this. And, um, we're, we are, and thanks to Matt on this, Matt has been a really good communicator. We're hoping that our, we're able to find some competitive pricing, even state contract, that might be lower than what we're currently getting. It won't be a massive savings, but something that, again, an example of how we're trying to find ways to partner with others or look at ways to combine contracts to, to save money.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next one, next one's a big one. Um, can I get a motion to tentatively approve page fifty-three, Transportation Services, in the amount of four million six hundred and ninety-two thousand and forty-one dollars?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
Okay, so as you can see here, the, transportation is gonna show up in a, in a few different places, not just on page fifty-three. Um, that's why, you may say, it doesn't match what was in Kathy's presentation, because there's some other elements of transportation. Um, on Monday, uh, I'll plan a more, um, I'm happy to answer any questions today, but I'm, I'll, I'll have a more detailed scope of kind of what our process has been. But, you know, we've been keeping the board apprised of, of our, of our work on transportation. Really, this is... Really, this has been an ongoing work, but, you know, sleeves have been rolled up for quite some time now in looking at this. So these, this is right in line with what we had anticipated going out. I think it's worthy noting, and I'll probably be redundant on Monday, but had we remained in our current contract, I think it's worth noting that there would have been a substantial increase regardless. This is a bigger increase than it would have been had we stayed. But, you know, that would have been likely 10% or higher. And, you know, we've seen continuing escalation here. You can see it in our monthly financials. Again, I can't, I'm trying to hold back because Monday I have more information to share. And as you saw on the agenda, we'll be considering, we're bringing a proposed contract forward to the board. But, you know, there are, in addition to what we hope to be safe and reliable service, there are some additional enhancements that we feel continue to provide what our community expects and desires when it comes to reliable service. So a majority of vehicles moving forward, and this is a part of the RFP, which is available as well, a majority of our vehicles will be brand-new coming into this new contract. All of our vehicles will be equipped, all buses will be equipped with four security cameras that capture video and audio, including something that we feel is helpful, which is an exterior camera that will help us review or investigate anything that happens both inside and outside of the bus. GPS tracking, all vans that drive students will have video recording and audio recording. So again, I know these, you may wonder, but these are really necessary tools to have to ensure that our kids are safely transported to and from school. And I can't thank our team enough, Sam, Matt, Beth, our entire team for the work, our negotiations team for the hard work that they put in to embark on this process. We're grateful for the contributions of our current partner and over a long period of time and hold high expectations for all service that is done in our district and really hope that we'll continue to see improvement in that area. It's important.
Scott, will this number change between today and Friday?
What I think, what I think will be refined as we go through the different areas where transportation is covered. You know, when you look at big buses, specialized transpo, I think there's some shifting, but the overall increase is, Beth, I think, pretty, pretty close to spot-on. There's a little bit of change, Bill, to answer your question.
But not a lot.
Yes, but pretty, pretty close to where it is.
Okay.
And then I think, I think the other, just the other point is, the way it's designed right now is we get over, you know, this is a big, big jump, and then there'll be increases for the years to come, but more manageable in terms of looking at an overall operating budget. This is a, this is a big step to take.
Sure.
And then hopefully flat out a bit.
Well, like I said in my opening remarks, this is the school district delivering on something that our community's been asking for for years. So I just want to commend the team in getting us here in a way that was fiscally responsible and with transparency and some notice in a sense. I mean, this is not a surprise, this was going to come. And there was always going to be that day where we were going to have, if we were going to make the changes that we're making, that there would be a significant increase. And to do what you've done over the last three or four years to get us to this place is something that should be, is certainly noteworthy. Any questions?
I do have questions, and if it's easier to answer them Monday, I'm fine with, like, if you say that. It's more just around, so obviously I'm pro buses, as everyone probably knows here, and like, you know, making them better and all the deficiencies we've had with them. But I think when you mentioned the word like enhancements on here, that's where my particular interest is in, because I feel we have a very low bar right now in the district in terms of our buses getting for us from point A to point B. And people think they need things because that bar is not being met. So you think you need a GPS on every bus because you don't know where your child is because the buses are never showing up on time or something like that. But in reality, I don't know if all the bells and whistles are needed. If your child is where they're supposed to be every day at the same time and you know where to pick them up, like, are those enhancements that you think you need, but in reality you don't if your baseline of performance is there? So my question is more just in cost savings on enhancement point of view, not so much questioning, obviously, I agree with the buses and all of that. It's just on those kind of bells and whistles.
I'd be happy to answer that now.
Yeah, please.
So I think that's a great question, and I think right in line with some of the things that we asked and considered. So you may be alluding to like an app-based, we are not planning to have that as a part of this currently. It's certainly available and was available and was even included in some of the different items. We have piloted that, we actually own the ability to do that. One of the challenges right now is when, when you're not riding the same bus, like the same physical bus every day, as, for one reason, and, you know, I get a call from a concerned parent that says, hey, why is my child in Meriden right now? Well, they're not, but the bus is maybe, you know, right, and actually leads to more concern than less, and so it doesn't actually mitigate what we're trying to solve, along with some areas in town where, so we piloted this, actually, Matt and I have worked on this for the last two years of piloting whether or not this is something we wanted to do. But there's other areas where the GPS might be a lag behind, so there's a 10-minute or eight-minute delay between. And the vendor that we're bringing forward, we asked that question, and we expect to hold them to account on their response, but the response was somewhere along the lines of when you're on time every day, you don't require the need for GPS. So then we went ahead and we did call, we did reference checks on all of the vendors that we, and you'll hear more about this on Monday, but buying, nobody's perfect, and I say this with the caveat that we fully anticipate market improvement, but reserve the need for continued feedback and continued area of improvement. But those are the types of things that we looked at. We do, however, believe that the camera coverage and the need for that is a necessity in looking at how to monitor. And then the GPS part, what we will have is daily moment in time GPS tracking from the central office perspective. We do not, we actually, I would say, I don't have a desire to manage transportation at the level that I've engaged in that management. We're hiring a company to manage that, really. So the first, again, not that we love to interact with our families, but the bus company is the best place to serve our families with questions and concerns. And so the vendor we're bringing forward fully intends, and the districts that they're operating in currently, that's how, that's how their operation works, where they are, they are the first stop. But I think a large driver of the cost here is new, brand-new buses. And our contract, we have a provision in our current contract around the age of the fleet, but the age, there'll be a marked difference in the age of the fleet of our, of our new, with our new, with our new contract going forward.
Yeah, I would just kind of add to that. We, you used the word enhancement, and I would think of it more as kind of bringing our bus service up to an expectation level that our community deserves. And it's almost as if like kind of like a standard of care type of thing, you know, we need to bring our bussing to a place that really is, you know, on equal footing with our contemporary community, you know, our communities are in the Farmington Valley. We need to get better, frankly. And so it's not like we're putting, you know, bells and whistles perhaps that might be unnecessary, right? That's a fair question, but these are just to really get us to a place where we're delivering a level of service that's really consistent with the expectations of our town. That's kind of how I look at it. I know Nadine and Andrea and James, members of negotiating committee, who kind of got themselves up to speed very quickly, and I'm grateful for that. If you want to add anything here, you're more than welcome to. You don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
No, I think Scott really covered it spot-on and into your, echo your sentiments, Bill.
Okay.
We just need to step it up.
Okay.
And I was actually going to say for clarification for Angela, enhancements were really more around safety than anything else.
Okay, terrific.
Looking forward to it Monday.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. Motion to tenably approve transportation services? All those in favor, we already did that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 54, tenably approve field trips in the amount of $21,386.
This is a $4,200, I'm sorry.
I know, I delayed, sorry. Motion, second.
Discussion. Okay.
Now I'm ready.
My foot's on the gas, I understand.
It's like, it's.
I understand this guy.
Like riding a bike, you know? So $4,277 increase, 25%, and this is just another facet of anticipated cost as it relates. Not a major dollar increase here, though.
Any questions?
So Scott, this piece of it also touches the bussing, right, for the field trips and so forth, like a little?
Correct. You know, quite honestly, you know, I think in general, we're going to see an increase, but you're going to see hopefully some more steady patterns in our billing and predictability around budgeting, which will be really helpful for us. You can see that we, we, year after year, go over. I can't promise that special education will not be volatile in terms of special needs transportation, but the pricing structure of the contract makes it, will make it easier for our team to project spending, which will be valuable to us, I think, in general.
I think what I was just, the point is that the number here, I think it touches different categories.
Exactly, exactly.
This is one part of.
Yes. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 55, may I get a motion to tenably approve telephone services in the amount of $100,596?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
This is flat, and I know Matt has worked on getting us to this point to realize savings in this area or to keep the costs where they are. Is that accurate, Matt? Anything else you would add?
Yeah, and contractual at this point, we're not looking to add and maybe subtract some lines in the future, but I can't say that that's a definite.
Good. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, postage. Page 56, may I get a motion to tenably approve postage services in the amount of $50,392?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
$200 decrease in postage. We actually did do some analysis of postage because these come in the school budgets. And so we tried to understand, you know, one school had larger postage than another to try to just make sure that it was as close as possible, so, to what we're spending.
Questions?
I had a quick question. Like, when I think of postage, I think of stamps, you know? Does this include things like UPS or Federal Express?
I imagine it would. I think it's more so around, you know, a lot of this is driven through, you know, again, special ed processes and things like that, where you're going to be.
Notices that have to go out.
Notices and things like that. Or certified mail for certain things that you need to be, to verify that they were received and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Would a communications committee fall under this too?
Would communication have any?
If we were mail, it covers like our central office mailings.
So in other words, we send out our mailer?
Our newsletter.
The mailer twice a year, is that under, fall under here?
No, I'm not sure about that.
Because it's part of that contract.
When we send out our community newsletter, does it go under public relations for the actual mailing or do we? It does go through postage.
Okay, so yes.
It comes out of our mailroom essentially and has to get stamped with.
So we pay for a lease of a mail machine through central office as well that comes out of this account?
Gotcha.
Which is where anything that would.
We're not paying full price for, you know, we're not paying, you know, 38 cents a stamp when those mails go out.
Right, right.
This account also supports HR recruitment, though, so it's not just things that we mail. We use some of these funds when we're developing, you know, promotional materials or we're attending a recruitment fair out of state, so this is also an account for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Any other questions?
No, I just looked at you when you said 38 cents a stamp, I said, where are you buying stamps?
I know, I know, I know.
A lot more than that.
He doesn't go to the post office.
I don't go to the post office. Put it downstairs in my paralegal mailroom. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 57, data line. Can I get a motion to tenably approve data line services in the amount of $213,294?
Motion, second.
I'm sorry.
Second?
Discussion.
A $30,000 increase here, 16.37% during the pandemic is required increase here. A lot of that was covered through the SIR funding, which is no longer available.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 58, can I get a motion to tenably approve printing services in the amount of $31,413?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
It's a $526 increase or 1.7%. As you can see, it's used for a variety of printing services.
Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, page 59, may I get a motion to tenably approve public tuition in the amount of $186,284?
Motion, second.
Discussion.
$25,000 increase here, 15.5%. This is based on projected enrollment. I can tell you that this is an item that we have had to change before coming to, you know, we didn't change it, but we've, it's changed several times in the past, you know, months of planning the budget. Projected revenues have been applied here and is one that is in particularly challenging to really pinpoint what the costs are going to be as it fluctuates.
Would this be a good opportunity or a good place to talk a little bit about open choice or, and how we get money reimbursements from other communities and how that all works? Or is there, would there be a better place to have a conversation about that?
I can just say that when it comes to open choice, we typically have a 3% target as far as how many students we take in, but you already, in many ways, limit that in that I don't add students to classrooms that are already at a level that then it would overcrowd a classroom. So by policy, I, we only add in places where we have low class size. We typically add students at the preschool, kinder, and first grade levels, but that doesn't necessarily always work out because there could be a preschool student who is accepted into the lottery and they have a sibling in first grade. And so we always take those things into account because having families together really works out for families. And so because we are at a 3%, we are usually at a $6,000 tuition level. But what is not factored into that tuition level is special education. So any special education costs are over and above, like, we bill back to Hartford Public Schools for any special education cost. So if a student in this situation was in Farmington through open choice but had to be outplaced, Hartford is paying for that outplacement. Same thing with magnet students who live in Farmington. If a magnet student, a student in Farmington goes to a magnet school, ends up getting outplaced, or any services associated with that student, we're billed back for that. So no matter where the child goes, special education is paid by the place, the town that the student lives in. And that happens with open choice or magnet. What also is not factored in the $6,000 tuition level is transportation. So transportation is also something that's over and above the $6,000, but we don't pay for that tuition. I mean, sorry, that transportation that's paid for through CREC, and they coordinate that transportation. So in our per pupil, you have special education factored in, you have transportation factored in. You also have grants that we receive, whether it's state level or federal level, and revenues. So all of that, as well as in-kind services from our town, which you see in the back of the budget book, all of that is factored into a per pupil amount for Farmington. And those are things not in the open choice that's over and above and it's paid somewhere else. We don't have to pay those things. So that is how that all works out. So that is how that all works out. So again, doesn't include revenues, doesn't include state and federal funds, which add on to our per pupil, doesn't include transportation, doesn't include special education costs.
Any questions? Okay. So can I, all those in favor of approving page 59, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 60. Attentively approve private tuition in the amount of $1,398,628?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
So you can see an increase here of $233,133 or a 20% increase and very similar to the commentary from the last, the last page.
Okay, any questions?
So just the difference between the last page and this page is just, it says if they went to another public school versus another private school, that's just the difference of those two buckets, basically?
Correct.
And that's determined by their IEP specific to that child?
Yeah, or, yeah, you know, some, we rarely have it here, but like some public school districts maintain programming that is open to pay for tuition for other students, for specialized programming. You know, I know, like off the top, there's several, but I know East Hartford has programming, so it might be, you know, for a specific student's need, that program might be a good match versus other, other schools which are privately run, but also serve, you know, serve the same, you know, or serve a similar purpose for student needs. So it really just depends on the school that the student is best matched for. CREC would be another example of...
They run several outplacement programs. So this is not the open choice money that you were just talking about?
No, no, this is, would, right.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 61. Can I get a motion attentively approve tuition to educational service agencies in the amount of $242,920?
Motion?
Second.
There's a $40,000 increase here, 19.71%. And so this covers, I would say, the main costs coming from this are for tuition for our magnet students that we pay, in addition to the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center, which is located in Weetog, and that is a jointly run program that is operated by CREC, but we share in the, we are a district that shares in the maintenance of that program. Trying to think, probably another good example of, like, we run jointly with the Simsbury Public Schools, which is basically self-sustaining, the Farmington Valley Transition Academy, which is for 18 to 22-year-old students. Our district in Simsbury are the two districts that operate that, but we receive students from other districts into that program in which they pay, we collect the tuition, and then manage the finances on the backend between how much it costs for Simsbury and Farmington to share in the operational cost there, which is really proportional to the amount of students that any given year Farmington has or Simsbury has to who is, you know, where those costs are coming from. So our costs go into that as well. But I think that's a good example of, like, that would be, if we weren't managing that program, that would be a public school tuition for us to send to versus a private program.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 63. Can I get a motion attentively approve travel expenses in the amount of $96,911?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Are we on 62?
Did I skip a page?
Yes. Tuition, other?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Sorry, I withdraw that. Can I get a motion attentively approve page 62 tuition, other, in the amount of $48,000? Thanks, Nadine.
Yep.
Motion? Second.
Discussion.
So this rarely changes. There is a $6,000 increase or 14.29%. This is really mandated adult education, so this is, part of our continuing education program is self-sustaining, so they rely on the revenue, but these are, this is a mandated cost to the district. I would point out, I would point out that cost containment measure that has really been led by Lori Wirebeck, but she has, over time, grown the program. We actually manage the Avon, Canton, Simsbury in Region 10 Adult Education Program as well. So they share, it's a cost containment strategy. It's highly promoted by the State of Connecticut, but we are the managing site for the mandated adult education programs. So for example...
So we receive...
We receive...
Money from those communities to offset, you know, the cost of the programming.
But whatever our cost is, they share, we all share, depending on how many students are enrolled for each district, the funding for that. So GED, ELL, citizenship, all the mandate, state mandated programming, this is what that covers, just, I thought, just as a little extra to what that is.
Any questions?
Do we get any state funding for this particular...
Yes.
Area?
Not, not...
Not.
Not a substantial amount, but we do get some, yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I'll go back to page 63. Can I get a motion attentively approve travel expenses in the amount of $96,911?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
$1,501 increase or 1.57%. These are really contractual obligations and slight increases in IRS mileage as well.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, page 64. Can I get a motion attentively approve natural gas expenses in the amount of $338,000?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
So $4,226 increase, 1.27%. We did match with the town here, and then a few of the ones ahead, we've relied on, in particular for the new Farmington High School projections based on the design engineers of the project.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, pages 65 through 67. Can I get a motion attentively approve electricity services in the amount of $1,165,450?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
So you can see an increase here of $55,700, or $976, or a 5.05% increase. We do have an energy service agreement in place, and we just shifted over. We actually matched where the town of Farmington is also engaged in the energy service increase. I do expect rates to increase. We have a current plan that ends in December of next year, and then we take on a new plan, so it's, you know, it's likely that we'll see a shift there when we come back next year.
Just as a clarifying note, it's pages 65 and 66, not 65. I'm just going off of this. Yep, sorry about that. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Keep going. We gotta keep going? Yeah, let's keep going. Okay. Next, we're on to the next tab, Supplies. Scott is going to review the Supply Series for us. Supplies account for 2.93% of our total budget. This year, we have an 18.25% increase, and he will detail that as he goes line by line.
Great, thank you. So the supply line, you know, you heard the increases there. Covers a variety of supplies, facility rentals for athletics, instructional, health, custodial, as you'll probably know, a major increase there that we'll discuss, computer testing, textbooks, library books, AV and computer materials. You know, so this is an area where cost escalation, inflation, in addition to areas where we significantly cut last year, and trying to zero-based right-match what we're actually spending as well. And so happy to go page by page here.
Thank you. All right, start with page 67. May I get a motion attentively approve instructional supplies in the amount of $538,284?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
$70,870 increase here or 15.16%. And this is really our, mostly our, our school supply request, which is based on a restoration of funds from last year. Happy to answer any questions?
Sure, any questions?
And I would say, you know, I mean, you could add a litany of things that just cost more than they did before.
Right.
One that I think we, the board had some fun with me on last year was just the skyrocketing cost of paper, and that continues. It's just, and Sam will talk about it when we talk about paper supplies in the custodial supplies area as well. We've just, we've just seen a continued increase in cost, really, post-pandemic. You know, as you know, things have leveled off, but they never return. We know this, right? It never returns to what it was.
Just a quick question.
Sure, please.
Does the new school have anything to do with the price, like, an escalation of the amount of supplies that we need because of the new school?
I would say not that, not much that we anticipated when you look at like the high school proposed budget for supply needs, the, all the furniture fixtures and equipment we approved and are covered through the cost of the project. Majority of what, I was just, actually, when we started the meeting today, I started looking around, I'm like, we have a lot of work to do in the next couple of months. Because a lot of, it's coming with us. A majority of that's coming with us. You know, any of the supplies that are left over will come over as well. So I would say it's more, you know, I can't recall, Beth could probably jump in and tell me, but we did make a significant reduction to this, so schools have been pretty stretched on their supplies this year. We have a couple that will end up going over before the end of the year. And that, in addition to trying to use whatever the Consumer Price Index is at the time of budgeting to predict what things will cost next year.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Do we have any type of breakdown on like the textbook component here? Because like, how much of that is for, you know, old textbooks that are like falling apart that we need to get back to standard versus curriculum changes? Because I just think we need to be cognizant of, you know, it seems like I've seen curriculum, you know, we saw it on the stipend end to write the curriculum, but then that didn't include the textbooks, and I see that this is a big line item. So I just don't know if there's any type of analysis done on like when we're thinking about the changes in the curriculum or like how much of these are mandated and obviously we need to do it versus we just want to improve? Because it does seem like the curriculum changes, like, I mean, I know from my personal, having a child and another child two years later, I mean, these are young ages, they're doing different things, and I see different materials, and like, that had to cost money to do that. So I'm just, I just wanted to know if there was any type of analysis done on that when we're changing curriculums?
Yeah, I think there always is in terms of, in terms of the cost. We actually have a textbooks page we'll get to later, and we can identify the, I would say the textbooks, and, you know, Kim, feel free to jump in as well, but I would say for the, when we get to the textbook page, they're really, they're for high school AP textbooks, the major textbook adoption, you know, or upgrades for this year. And it's because, you know, and things like that, in particular, some of the, you know, either ECE or AP courses at the high school, some of the, some of the scope is mandated by the AP. And so they added a new addition to help prepare our students for what they'll be assessed on for their college credit later in the year. So those are costs, I would say there's probably less analysis and more, more just, for those types of textbook adoptions, like, because we want to stay on course with the program, programmatic offer. You know, AP is offered nationwide, and so stay on course with that. I don't know if you have anything else?
I apologize, I thought this was textbooks, so this is not even textbooks. This is just the paper and everything.
We don't use very many what we would call textbooks at the elementary level, but we use a lot of books.
Yep, okay.
So when we implement a new unit that maybe focuses on birds and we want to, you know, have an influx of trade books that children are reading at different levels about birds, we often use grant funding. We can go to our Title I grant, we can go to our open choice academic support grant, we can go to Title IV. So if we need, you know, 100 new paperback books, at times, we can go there for those things. But that, we wouldn't consider those textbooks. So sometimes through the library budget, we'll find money for those kinds of things. But yes, if we were to start an entirely new unit at the middle school, for example, these days primarily, we're not, well, we certainly aren't using a textbook, but a lot of the resources students are using are digital, online, you know, so supplemental resources online.
You know, I, there, there is a mandate in reading, so you're probably seeing some new materials in reading, and that was the right-to-read legislation, and you heard a little bit about that from our legislators. For some districts, it has been a significant expense. It spans K to three is the legislation, so there are a limited number of programs that districts choose from that align to the science of reading. That's per the State Department of Education. There's a lot of back and forth statewide about, did the legislation really say to limit these programs? Or did it say that literacy programs should reflect the science of reading? So there's a lot of controversy. I think we have, our programming is really advanced in the area of literacy, so we haven't had the same probably impact. It's been challenging. I have to say, Kim and Veronica have really had to carry that through, and we've looked at all the programs, we reviewed all the programs that were potential, that we would have to choose from. So we're in that, but you would probably see new materials in phonemic awareness and phonics right now. That would be something that you would see, some new materials. I actually referenced a grant that we applied for and were awarded, and that is aligned to this legislation. $130,000 for Farmington could never really meet the costs. So they've put money out there for districts, but not enough to actually cover what the State Department of Education has interpreted in the law. We also had recently done a math review. We do, you'll see us do program reviews regularly because we want to be at the forefront of, you know, curriculum and programming for our students. So we did recently do a math program review, so we have new math materials that you'll see in school. So that's a, that is something that you'll see ebb and flow in the budget. There are consumables that we have to purchase every year for the little ones, they need to write in their workbooks, they aren't going to write over here and have a workbook here often, so, you know, those changes are probably related to the math program review and this new legislation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page 68. Can I get a motion attentively approve student activity athletic supplies in the amount of $316,814?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
So you can see here, there's an increase of $17,814 or 5.96%. During the break, I did clarify with Andrea that the earlier account that we looked at for the, under services, does account for paying and then for some of the services that are provided with clubs and activities, but this would cover supplies. Quite honestly, the major driver, the increase here, is game day operations for athletics and an increase to payment for officials.
Any questions?
Which is a significant shortage area, officials, right now.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 69. Office Supplies. Can I get a motion attentively approve office supplies in the amount of $72,869?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
$1,301 change here or 1.82%.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 70. Library Supplies. Can I get a motion attentively approve library supplies in the amount of $10,840?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
You see, there's a reduction here of $4,890 or 31.09%. And I think where you see these, they're examples of zero-based budgeting and where the need might not be as great.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page seventy-one, testing materials. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve testing materials in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
A slight increase here of six hundred and fifty dollars or one point four one percent. You can see this covers a variety of, um, assessment materials, in particular mandated assessment at the high school level.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page seventy-two, health supplies. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve health supplies in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
See a reduction here of nine hundred and twenty-three dollars or, uh, negative five point nine five percent. Um, again, as example of zero-based budgeting, I want to thank our nursing supervisor for looking carefully at what our supplies are and what our needs are for next year.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page seventy-three. Um, may I get a motion to tentatively approve audio, visual and computer supplies in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
Can see a increase here of three thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, two point six nine percent. Uh, this was previously offset by ESER funding. Um, since that is no longer available, you'll see that, um, some costs is coming back on the operating budget. Um, it was also cut last year, but this, um, provides a variety of, um, infrastructural supports as well through network and security licensing, firewall, backup service, uh, for IT.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page seventy-four. May I get a motion to tentatively approve custodial supplies in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
You can see there's a significant increase here of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars or seventy-four point five one percent. Um, I presume there may be some questions here. Uh, so, you know, I certainly invite Sam as well. Our buildings, uh, in particular the one we're sitting in right now, are used when it's dark in the morning and when it's dark at night, right? And so, they're really, um, community use spaces. Uh, you know, many of our other smaller schools are as well. Um, you can see that this is an area, and so this is one of those areas where, um, we want to be cognizant of what we're spending and, and try to bring forward a budgeted amount that reflects what the need is. So, you can see that we expended almost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then we're approved for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars last year. The monthly financials articulate that this is an area that continues to go over. Um, and it's related to a variety of issues. One is the cost of supplies and cleaning supplies have, uh, gone up significantly. The cost of paper has gone up significantly. Um, in addition, the pandemic, uh, created a whole new system and expectation for what types of materials are on hand and where they are, right? So, um, you went from a few hand sanitizing stations in a school to lots and lots of expectation for sanitizing materials. And those not only require the, the, um, you know, the bags of sanitizer that go inside them, but they require batteries and battery. And so, multiply that by your schools. And so, you know, it's certainly an area worth discussing, but, um, we're trying to project and match what we're paying, uh, for supplies with this item. So, I don't know if you have anything to add, Sam?
Since I did the analysis, I'll, I'll mention, I, I just looked at our twenty-twenty-one pricing on three items, which probably account for about fifty percent of the custodial supplies, and that's paper towels, toilet paper and, uh, garbage bags. And between twenty-twenty-one and current pricing, it's about a hundred and, a hundred and two to a hundred and seven percent increase in price on those items. So, um, so that accounts for the majority of what we're talking about. Um, as well, you know, when we were, um, out of school for a little while, and then when we were half and half, there was some stock, we were doing stockpiling of items as well. That stockpile's out now. So, we're, we're into real-time pricing with everything that we're purchasing and we're, we're paying exorbitant amounts more than what we had previously budgeted for.
Questions?
My only question is, I agree. I mean, I see it in my own grocery shopping that these prices are astronomical. I know you had presented like new machinery, like the Noah Wallace, that ride-on thing. That's not, that's not included in it, correct? That's a separate line item?
No, these are just cleaning supplies, uh, paper products that we put out.
Got it.
Or, yeah, or, or chemi-, uh, they're cleaning chemicals that we use and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, page seventy-five. Uh, can I get a motion to tentatively approve gasoline expenses in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
So, this is another, uh, impact of the transportation contract in shift. Um, in our previous contract, uh, we were, we all, we current, or our current contract, I should say, we are, um, reimbursed, um, for a partial fuel reimbursement. I will tell you that has caused complications with the town. Um, the town is the supplier of the fuel. Uh, we also worked with a consultant early on with the RFP process, and they had informed us that it is not industry standard or practice anymore. And so, uh, that was a recommendation we received and moved on. So, um, I will say that our new contract, um, you know, we've had some, you know, uh, like I said, complications and challenges with the current way that we structure fuel and, and being, uh, reimbursed for some of our fuel from the vendor. Uh, but the current contract will require the vendor to produce, um, their routing in advance to us, and then we will develop a fuel usage cap, and then they will pay us for anything beyond what, what we capped for it as well. So, if the fuel usage runs over what we, what we've budgeted for, um, they will be required to provide any fuel thereafter.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, page seventy-six. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve textbooks in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
So, you can see here, there's a sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollar increase or eight point seven two percent. This does cover what I alluded to before, the U.S. History and Biology AP textbooks. I don't think I mentioned the specific classes, but that's what they are, uh, designed to cover and replace. Um, in addition, it covers tech books. So, these are, um, this has been a shift in, you know, over the last ten or fifteen years in education where you're not buying a physical book, but you are paying a subscription for books that are related online. Matt, I'm sure can, would be able to share more about this, but that's a place where, um, you know, costs continue to increase over, over time as well with the rights to some of those tech book subscriptions.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page seventy-seven. Um, can I get a motion to tentatively approve library books in the amount of sixty thousand, twenty-five dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
See a slight reduction here of three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars or negative five point nine five percent, and another, uh, example of zero-based budgeting.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, page seventy-eight. Uh, can I get a motion to tentatively approve, uh, library subscriptions in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars?
Motion? Second?
Is a increase of one thousand, eighty-two dollars or two point eight two percent?
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page seventy-nine. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve professional subscriptions in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
Slight reduction there as well, four hundred and twenty-five dollars or negative six point nine six percent.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item is page eighty, uh, technology-related supplies. Can I get a motion to tentatively approve in the sum of three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
So, there's an increase here of sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars or twenty-one point seven five percent. Uh, this is an increase of, and with a restoration of funds, as you look at what was expended, uh, what was approved and what, what has been requested, we did have to shift some of that back onto, with grant funding. Um, and so that's likely the driver of, of a majority of that increase.
And this was also included in, you know, Matt's presentation.
Yes.
Previously, in a prior meeting. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I know I said we were going to break at twelve-thirty, but we've got two more areas of the book that aren't too, not much in terms of heavy lifting. I'd like to get through those two so we can let our staff go. Uh, they don't have to stay here for our executive session. So, let's, let's just kind of power through if we can. Um, so our next item, item will be, uh, equipment. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Hurwitz will review the equipment series, which accounts for a point five percent, uh, portion of our total budget. This year, we have a six point three eight percent increase, and he will detail that line by line. Scott?
All right, great. We'll jump, we should, uh, likely jump right to page eighty-one. Um, can see it's a small amount of our budget here. Um, and we can go through those pages.
Okay, very good. Um, can I get a motion to tentatively approve pages eighty-one through ninety, replacement of equipment in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
Okay, you can see here that in our replace equipment, we have a seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollar decrease or negative seventeen point four percent. You can review the items on, uh, the pages to follow. Uh, but this covers all equipment, technology, facility, and in the central office. Um, so this is likely where you would see to the previous question, uh, a request for a new item, um, such as ride-on equipment would, would fall in here. And you, and again, you can see the detail of those requests in the pages that follow, all the way through page eighty-nine.
Just for, for clarification, I think I said page ninety, but it is pages eighty-one through eighty-nine. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I get a motion now to tentatively approve pages ninety through ninety-eight, new equipment other, in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
So, you can see here, there's an increase of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars or nine point four one percent. Um, in the past, this is an area where, uh, new equipment has been offset by ESER. In addition, the open choice grant funding that we receive, um, is quite substantial in helping with replace equipment and our, you know, I, I, I've really been impressed in working with Kim and Sam. They've worked on streamlining a process for replacing equipment, uh, and, and how that works across the district and identifying a cycle so that we're spreading it out over time. Um, you've also heard of this in Matt's, uh, I think really a, a big driver in this increase is from Matt's presentation as well. And what we had been able to use ESER funding for, but now Chromebooks coming back onto the operating budget. Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand of the, of the dollar change there is Chromebooks.
Okay, question?
Yeah, I, um, I get this from, uh, a lot of parents who have high school athletes. How do they decide or when, um, uniforms get replaced?
So, they also utilize, um, utilize a uniform replacement. Uh, so they have a, a system in place where they're, where they're doing it. Um, so they'll actually plan in their budget as well, a cycle. I would say the shift was, the, uh, the only shift or interruption in that cycle was when we, uh, when the high school went through the rebranding process. There were, uh, we, before that process, we had identified the projected costs and which teams, uh, wouldn't be, weren't quite on board with that. But, but that's typically what happens as a cycle.
Is that amount like one team, two teams?
I think that's two. Is it two?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Bill, I just have one thing.
Sure.
It's not a ton of money, but for FHS, it looks like new biomedical science equipment. Is that for the new high school? And was, would that have been, I would have thought that would have been in the budget for the high school? Or is that, why is that a line item here?
I think there are some new programs that we are implementing, that we need equipment for, that we didn't have when we were doing the budget for the new school a couple of years ago. Um, so as, as programming moves forward, we have new partnerships. Um, you know, there is still a need for limited, but some new equipment.
The only thing I'd add of is if it's not something that can be, uh, you know, that's going to be physically mounted in the school, um, it's not a reimbursable item either. I, I don't have the specific recall right now on, on what those are, but.
We're going to bring that type of equipment over, but there's just a need for some new equipment to be purchased, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto our last tab, dues and fees. Scott's going to review those with us. These account for point three seven percent of our total budget. This year, we have a seven point zero three increase, and he will detail those line by line.
All right, here we go. Last, last tab for our page-by-page review, an overall increase of seven point zero three percent. Uh, and this section includes memberships, professional organizations, and also the biggest driver of this, uh, is the liability, automotive and property insurances that, that we hold through, through Kerma.
Can I direct everyone's attention to page ninety-nine, insurance other than employee benefits in the amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars? May I get a motion to tentatively approve?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
These are the coverages that I previously alluded to. Um, and this is a contractual requirement with Kerma. We also do share these insurances with the town of Farmington as well.
Questions?
And I apologize, it's a, I know you can all see as well, but just, um, for, for those who are going to watch later as well, that's a twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollar increase, nine point seven nine percent.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, page one hundred. May I get a motion to tentatively approve memberships in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
So, reduction here of one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars or negative three point one four percent. And as you can see there, it covers a variety of district memberships, um, at the executive level, principals level, and school-based memberships that are, um, statewide.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, folks, that brings us to the last page, uh, page one-on-one. And again, as I said at the beginning of our meeting, this is a motion for tentative approval only. This is not a final approval. This is an opportunity to kind of get this teed up for final approval on Monday night. Think about some, some things we talked about. I know you guys are all taking notes today, and if you have any questions, you know, might want to shoot them over to me, and I'll funnel them through to the superintendent Monday before, or tomorrow or Monday before we meet again on Monday night. Um, and then we'll finally approve, we'll, we'll have our budget for final approval on Monday night. So, may I, at this point, ask for a tentative approval of, um, the superintendent's recommended budget in the amount of eighty million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
This includes the.
You made some changes.
Reductions.
Right, yeah, she, she pointed that out to me, right.
So, there is a dollar change, uh, increase of four million, five hundred and thirty-four, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, five point nine seven percent. Um, and appreciate everyone's questions, and I look forward to continued dialogue around this.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
A little bit more enthusiasm, please.
Sorry, can I just clarify? I know you just said it, but so this is just approving the reading of it. Like, we're not, this isn't the official approval of the, of that budget.
One hundred percent correct.
We'll have a discussion about that.
Hundred percent.
Okay, got it.
Yes. This is just to get through, right. Well, there's going to be a philosophical discussion about how we do what we do on Monday night. What we're going to submit to the, to the council. Okay, um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, with that, we can take a break. We're going to go into, we'll have, we'll go to an executive session, I guess? We want to take a break and then go to an executive session? What do you want to do? What do we want to do?
So, it's, it's up to everyone. Um, we could grab lunch and then go in.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah. But we have a normal to go into executive session.
Grab a sandwich and then go. Grab a sandwich and then go. All right, so can I get a motion to enter executive session, please?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session at 12:46. Yeah, well, yeah, can I get a motion to return us back to a public session, guys?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're back in session at 1:38. Okay, so we have completed the tentative review of our budget book. Monday night is really the night for us to discuss how we want to go forward. You know, the, if there's a line item you want to return to, by all means, if you want to make a proposed reduction, Monday night would be an appropriate time to do that. You know, we'll discuss it, work collectively on any motion that's properly brought before the board. If there's a, as a request for a reduction, you know, that's certainly appropriate, we could, we'll, we'll, we'll consider it collectively. So that's really all I have, I think, at this point. I get a motion to adjourn, I guess.
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.